Whatever happy.
All right, we'll call a meeting to order. Mr. Chair, is there any corrections or additions to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, two action items to add. Twenty-one A is a social worker family facilitator appointment. Twenty-one B is a deputy assessor appointment. We can address with HR at ten fifty after number nineteen. And one correspondence item, C five is information on the AMC Fall Policy Conference. That we can review with the correspondence.
Is there any reports from the commissioners?
Mr. Chair, I have a cell central EMS meeting and Region Five Emergency Management meeting.
Just a pack meeting.
Okay.
South Country Health lines.
Okay, and I've got PAC and yeah, there's an insurance committee meeting also.
Area two, our CRCA and part meeting last evening.
Okay, if there's nothing else, that'll be our agenda for today. We have the minutes of July twenty-fourth.
Move on. Second.
Motion second, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Okay, number two, Mr. Altman.
Come on, guys. Chair, just bringing forward the joint cars agreement for the drug task force. You attended the county attorney Chuck Hansen meeting. Number of entities have already approved this. They're on board or they're down.
So the changes, there's some changes to this from other years?
Yep, the highlighted, they should be the highlighted first.
And Mr. Chairman, I think it was primarily some of the insurance and nomenclatation language that's been rewritten.
Yeah, that's right. Where legal counsel wrote that.
What was actually done, do you know, I mean how?
I think they had to separate between drug task force and ERU making two separate.
Ah, okay.
This is something we sign every year?
No, it's not every year, it's.
It's an ongoing JPA unless there are some amendments.
All right, overall, move it.
Oh, second.
Yeah, motion second, is there any? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Seeing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Mr. Chair, you'll get a signed form then again.
We've got it ready to sign out there for you.
Great, thank you.
Have a good day, see ya.
Last June. She left. I'm assuming she's coming right back.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
But good, I know we approved the minutes here already and it went past, but I didn't catch, I had made a comment on one part here. It was on page six electronically, but it was that the auditor or the auditor treasurer from Staples was gonna buy cabinet doors. I just wanted to clarify, was it cabinet doors or cabinet locks that we were?
It was the doors.
It was doors themselves.
Doors with locks, so it can be locked.
Thank you.
And a follow-up to that, we did get documentation that it meets the state requirements from the procurement.
Okay.
Cooperative procurement venture, which is a state bid process.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I just noticed I didn't have the claim, whoa, wait a minute, guys. All right, I hope that you have a claims list for two hundred forty-six thousand eight ninety-five-seven. Is that very much? Whoa, guys.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I did have a question, Jeanne, and you might not know this, how they go about with services, servicing the vehicles. Picking where to go, I know we try and patronize many different places.
I guess that would be the department head's.
All right.
Choice, I don't have, know if we have a policy, what they do or no, I don't know.
Cause I saw one that looked kinda high, I was curious.
No.
I'll move on.
Second.
Okay, we have motion second on the claims, any other discussion? Seeing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
The signature sheet is gonna be on its way, so we're just a little bit behind on that.
Okay.
The second item that I had was establishing the campus board for the twenty eighteen election. We need one for both the primary and the general election, we go over the final results. The statute outlines who has to be a part of that campus board. We need two commissioners and the district court, the court administrator, the mayor of New Wong, and two members of the county board along with myself. And for this election, Commissioner Simonsen would be ineligible because his name is on the ballot. So whoever you point is, will be notified, the date of the meeting is already established, August seventeenth at ten AM is the one for the primary.
Mr. Chair, there is a conflict on community health board, full board meeting on August seventeenth at nine o'clock versus ten o'clock. So that'll have to be addressed, or that person will not be able to attend that meeting.
Are there multiple commissioners that go to that meeting?
All of them.
All, oh, I'm sorry.
Is that a short, that's a short meeting, I'm assuming, right?
It is very short.
That's the one, that's the meeting we've rescheduled.
Yeah, correct.
Should I switch this to, could see maybe eight forty-five, you know, before?
That would be, that would be better.
Would that work ahead of time?
Or eight thirty, or, I don't know.
Eight thirty?
Yeah, eight thirty would be perfect, bro.
Yeah, I think so, cause should be a short, quick meeting.
I will check with the court administrator and the mayor, I have notified them of this, but I'll see if we can get an eight thirty time.
Okay.
And we'll assume that it's right, unless you hear something different.
So we're assuming eight thirty and that's bigger differently, okay?
Yes, please. And so I just need to.
In case we need two commissioners for each.
Well, I'll, I'm here, it's not a, there's no premium paid on that, I will volunteer to do both of them if somebody's gotta. We gotta have two of us, so I think, right?
Yep, so we need one more.
I'd volunteer.
Good.
So it's eight thirty on the seventeenth.
And please mark down the November thirteenth page as well, they would both be assigned here at this meeting.
November thirteenth at what time?
Eight fifteen.
And it's right here?
The general, they have that in here.
Do we need backup person? Or do you have to have these specific people by request?
No, I just, I need two commissioners.
Okay, I'm just wondering if you, sometimes we, if something happens, someone can't make it, do you want a backup person to do it?
If they can't make it, can they, they can call somebody else for sure.
I know on both those days, I'm actually in the wall, but that morning anyways, so that wouldn't.
If you wanna come in, I don't, I mean, I think it's a minimum, so if you wanted to be here, I don't think it's gonna hurt anything.
Yep.
Or do you wanna do it in?
No, that's fine, I just said if you, if you, something happens, you guys can't do it. Right now the schedule looks like I'm in, however, meetings a little bit later that morning, so I can come in a little earlier if somebody has this kind of like.
Do you need a motion on this?
I would think that it was the.
I'll move to, like, Commissioner Walker. Oh, sorry.
And the dates, I'm assuming, on that motion? Okay, any other discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeanne. Okay. Number five.
List of drainage repairs. We do include an aerial spraying in this one. And there, this is a fairly long only repair. Does he have any questions?
Aerial spraying, is this, we did what, about half?
Roughly, yeah.
Is that, does that compare to about half of what aerial spraying?
It was last year then.
Okay. Do you remember?
Yeah, something like that, yeah.
Okay.
Chair, I had somebody contact me about concerns when they're repairing, that they're replacing, say they're repairing concrete or something, that's a smooth flowing thing. I don't know what the coefficients are, that they're replacing it with only corrugated and not aligned. So basically you're slowing water down. Cause the adage corrugated is less flow than a, than a lined one, you know, you know what those things do. So do you know, are they, you know, if they're replacing agents, are they just putting in the standard corrugated or are they putting in aligned?
It depends on kind of soil conditions, most of the time it's just a plastic corrugated.
Standard corrugated.
Yeah, we match the size.
The concern was that you're creating a little bit of a slowdown there.
Sure.
Okay, just so that you know.
Yep, and like some cases do, you know, if it's like a seven inch or something like that, they don't make that anymore, so go up to an eight.
Right, there, yeah. But there's thirty or, thirty or forty percent difference in the flow of, between the two, isn't there?
I.
It's quite a bit.
It's quite a bit, I don't know if it's that much, but.
Question for you, Andrew, when I look at the acres for the, each ditch system that was sprayed. Judicial ditch thirty is at sixteen acres, judicial ditch twenty-nine is at thirty-two. And I'm thinking that judicial ditch thirty is as big as twenty-nine or bigger.
It's based on spot spraying?
So they're not, this is an entire, they're, they're going through and.
Turn it on and off, or just about spray it as they see it from the air.
They can do that at that speed?
Yeah, that's what they say.
Okay.
And so we pay the acre by the application rate.
Okay.
So there isn't anybody measuring any acre, just.
Yeah.
Based so much an acre, you know, the material.
Do they use that by, I know they know how much they spray per acre, so is it by volume of water they sprayed in? Or actually trying to get an estimate on what they fly over?
By volume they spray. Okay, that's my understanding.
Okay, I did not know that. Thank you.
And the ground, the ground spraying should be the same way as if they didn't spray continuous, that would be a lot more expensive if they just spot spraying as they see it.
Are we getting that really yet, or?
I haven't got, haven't got yet.
No, they don't?
They finished it, so probably the next meeting, if we get that, I'll bring that forward.
It would be nice on that ground spraying to be able to have documentation of how well it worked, I'm assuming it will work better, so we just.
Yeah.
Would like to have visual.
Notice some, systems are better off with the kind of spot checking. There's some bad.
Oh, okay.
Fill on a lot of the weeds and trees doing so.
You said you really saw them get it, the trees good?
Yeah.
Might as well.
What are they using for?
There's a two forty variety, something, and.
They tore down in there a remedy or something like that?
I don't think there is on this, on the aerial one, there's not. It's just torn in.
I don't think they tore it out over water.
Aqua, I believe, yeah. And there's something else further to use too, if I can't remember offhand what that knee was.
Okay.
I'm sure that the ground will do a better, if they're using something specific, killing trees, that will do a better job on trees and.
Yeah.
And some of the large, there's shrubbery that's growing out there that we're not killing eventually.
And they gotta get, attack more angles too, so.
Get a lot more on there, focus on it.
They can see it better when they're driving on, actually, when they're flying by.
And don't most of the trees and shrubbery type things grow toward the top part of the ditch bank anyway? At least my experience is.
Half, three quarters-ish, I suppose, I think.
Is it pot, and I don't know if I'd get time to do it, but I'll talk to you about maybe, like, we've got a ditch or two out on the west end of the county that are done. One done that was scrounging and some aerial, so I can maybe take a look at them and see how my visual observation is. It's just curious to see personally how they, the two work, you know, give them a couple more weeks and see what happens.
We've got a map of the county that shows the ones that are aerial and the ones that are ground, we'll give that to you.
That would be, I think that'd be really good.
And you can just look yourself.
It's pretty much the ones that don't have, well, the bumper or aerial, and then the ones with the acquired or ground spray.
Yeah, I think that'd be appreciated, it'd also help us to talk, we get people to talk, ask questions or have comments, and we can look to see which way they were sprayed.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'll move the repair.
Second, here we have motion second, any other discussion? Seeing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
These sixes are just a monthly update, stop, stop this if you have any questions. The two thousand eighteen servicing projects, the contractor is gonna be moving in, the plant in this week. And he thought he could start Wednesday or Thursday, they're gonna start on number eleven, since we had some issues with that project. Get that strong, a little bit stronger, cause a lot of the material's gonna haul down that road, go to twenty and from six thirteen.
Is, is that the one that's got potholes that I've been getting called about?
That might be twenty.
Except by Hanska.
Yeah, they, or twenty and thirteen meet, just west of Hanska. They did their milling, so they're ready to pave, and then they haven't been back for a few weeks, so it's.
I got a person that's down that end of the county who's been, called me several times. And I think they've called Andrew, I believe, too.
We called the contractor, they came in and did some work, tried to get it passable till they get here, get that, at least the first lift in.
And the individual that called me was concerned about the size of the hole and safety.
But it is a closed road.
I understand, still didn't make any difference to him, he called, called me once tonight. Talked to you about today and then called me again since then.
Okay, any other questions on that?
The municipal project in Springfield, supposed to start today.
They did.
That's good.
I went by that quarter this morning, they returned her about.
Yeah, they gotta do lottery rules and adjust that catch basin on fourteen, highway fourteen, and then start pouring concrete. And Thursday is the grade, so. So that should go fast, and then the plan is next week to do milling and overlay, so that project should be done very quick.
They get, they get the construction part done, that, the rest of it will take a few days probably, right? Are they gonna do the overlay quickly after they do milling or?
Yeah, we've got it in there that they have to do it within five days, but it sounded like they're gonna mill one day and pave the next day or two after that. So it should be like a day to mill everything and a day or two to pave it.
So it'll take a little bit longer on five, just cause they're increasing that grade by the railroad track system with that hump out, so there's multiple lifts, so.
Yeah, raising it almost a foot there. Wait, wait for lifts to cool.
I know, I knew they were doing, you were gonna be doing a little excavation, because there's more red lines on that piece of pavement there than there, it's almost more red than there is down wet red. And I do have a question, and going a little further, around sixteen, who's responsible for the railroad crossings, HR? Okay, I don't know if you've observed what that railroad crossing looks like?
The guys keep telling us that it's in tough shape.
I went out, I crossed it with a truck, and coming around that corner, it really is rough, because it's not our road that's bad, but it's the concrete that's in between the rails is really breaking up, all, got some pretty good chunks missing.
Yeah. If you remember, I don't know if anybody was on the board then, but a number of years ago, the county had projects that put in concrete panels in a number of railroad crossings. And we'll probably have to see if we can do that there.
That is, that's concrete already though.
Yeah, it's just, it's failing concrete, I don't know how long it's been there, the state put that in a while back, before we took it over. So, but they, you know, they use a lot more salt than we do, so that's hard on concrete. I couldn't tell you, but from what I saw, the corners are breaking off. That's what I agree with. So they probably need to be replaced, which is not cheap, but.
I know when driving over, if they are, the pieces missing, and there's enough of it that it's truly rough, and it's particularly on a corner with a lot of trucks making that corner. I consider starting to get to be a safe, a little bit of a safety hazard, because trucks come around that corner, it's a difficult corner to make anyway, because it's going back on the angle. And you're reading traffic down that, so. I was pretty sure you were aware of it, but I wanted to make sure you understood, so we didn't have a surprise problem.
Yeah, that's a deal where we can't just hire a contractor and do it, we have to hire the specific contractors that the railroad allows, and have to work with the railroad, but we pay for it.
Okay, thank you.
And that would be state funds.
Yep.
And the Prairieville Bridge started July thirtieth, they were starting lane pipe yesterday, I'm thinking they should finish lane pipe today if they can get it all delivered. So by the end of the week, that project can be close to done. Then after that contractor gets done with that, he's gonna move down and start working on that railroad twenty bridge. And that would take another week or two, and then that'll be done. So they're making progress there. At the roundabout, they've got all the, or after today, they should have all the pipe in the ground, and they gotta do some final shaping for the grading. Bring in their gravel base, and then they're talking about starting concrete here, another week or two, or, or we got it. So that's making progress through.
Once you have someone in, completion on that?
Completion is supposed to be October second, so it's a couple months yet. There's a lot of work yet to do with concrete and blacktop. And the living snow fence and all the seating and stuff.
Wayne, on the, on the trees there, that I know they're gonna plant that, does that remain the state's property, the tree line?
That's what the county board agreed to maintain.
Yeah, so it remains state property and then we maintain it, is that correct?
Yep, still state right away.
Yeah.
The only thing that might hold that up is the light standards. When we did the pre-construction meeting, they said there's a difficult time getting the poles, light poles, so there's a possibility come early, October, everything will be done, but the lighting. And they talked about doing some temporary lighting so they could open it up. So that's, that's out there. Then, Andrew, do you have anything else on the ditches?
We had quite a few calls getting all for fall, fall work, like I said, the ground spraying is done. And we'll get the invoice and bring that to the board for approval. Talked with the steener for the buffer strips, he is up in civilly concrete right now, finishing up, so it should be a week or two, it'll be down here. We do have our maintenance guys running with the mower, knocking down the weeds, so then when he comes in, he can till it and disc it and get a good seat bed.
It's the bat mower, so it chews it up better, it's a fifty foot wide, we just make one pass.
The timing should be, usually they say seeding in early October is a good time, is the optimal time to seed grass.
Yeah.
We should be.
Yeah, so it should be end of August, I would think we'd be in seeding.
And then quit raining.
Yeah. So, other than that, just getting calls, and waiting until fall work again.
Yeah, pretty good list of projects already.
Yeah.
For the fall. And then for future projects, they talked with the Renville County engineer, and about the design engineer and the historian that the board approved at the last meeting. And he, I sent a copy of the contract agreement, and so he was gonna bring that to their board today, to see what they would be willing to contribute, and so we should have an answer for you for that.
Mr. Andrew, did we? It's probably time that we get commitment from Renville County, and I don't know if you've had time to talk to their administrator, have any communication with them?
Yeah, we have a new person there, but I have not contacted that new person yet.
I think we need to get something that's, we know where we're going, going forward on that.
Okay, I will, personally I contacted from Renville County, Bob Fox, him and I have worked with him through the energy course, I will also give him a call. And, you know, keep, keep contacting a couple different little spots.
That'd be good.
All right, and I assume if anybody else knows any of the other commissioners, it's not a bad thing to reach out and, and keep them in mind, and keep them on the date of what's going on. Courage, Renville County, and I assume when Bob talked to me about this, he was seeking from the county that they were, they want, this was important to them, and they would be willing to participate. So. Keep reminding them of that.
Okay.
All right, and then moving on to maintenance, we completed our seal coating, thirty-five miles on July three first. Most of the seal coating was done in July, worked out pretty well again this year, seems to be holding up nice. We're gonna be doing some patching now, once the contractor moves in, we'll have that three thousand ton of mix that we're gonna put down, patch on a road that needs get us through till we can do a project on it. We started a second round of top cuts for mowing, and we'll start mowing the weeds now, if we see them. And we, we've been able to spray about a hundred and six miles of road. And if you compare last fall and this summer, what we've done, there's sixty-eight miles that we haven't done yet, but we're still working on trying to get to. And then, once we get that sixty-eight miles done, we're gonna start checking over last fall's again, see if we can get that second time. And plating roads is ongoing, and we've hauled most of the gravel we need to, but we do have a number of roads we wanna put some shoulder in on. So there's still plenty to do this fall. And then we'll see us out there doing some mastic work on, it looks like we're gonna do County Road twelve and twenty-nine west of four. If you drive those roads, you see the cracks as you drive across, you hear a thump every time you cross them. The mastic should help fill that in and make it a little smoother, make those roads last longer. It's a little more expensive than regular cracks, and the, the regular cracks, they wasn't strong enough to hold up to the bigger cracks that are breaking down.
The seal coating, I know the last time we met, it was in rain and we had a bunch of oil out there and didn't know how did that all turn out? Are we seal coated up to where we need to be and what happened in that instance?
He got the third one canceled in time, and the second one, they had a break, enough breaking. And the second one, they had a break, enough break in the weather and they got it down. So it worked out okay.
So we got our next seal quarters?
Yep, everything we planned on.
You know, it was twenty-four where they had, I had driven over that road a couple of times and it was between, put some on and then it rained and then you didn't, came back finished later. But driving on the road, one side is done and the other side wasn't. And some of the approaches, I can see you've been working on that one and not been able to get finished because of the weather. But it all looks good now. I mean, I, I've been back since and I can't tell the difference between which side was done and which one wasn't.
Well, they work it out so that, they work on a road, they get, first they get one load in and they get the driveways done ahead of time because you can't do the driveways afterwards or you're scuffing up and scarred up the road, you do. So usually they get one load in and they do driveways ahead and then they finish off that load so we don't have to pay the money because we can only hold the truck for a couple of hours. Then, uh, the next time, they get maybe two loads and they do the roads that they got the driveways done already, but then they hold back one distributor load and they do driveways on the next road. And so they work themselves ahead that way. And so sometimes they get far enough ahead, they can get three loads done in a day as long as they don't have to mess with driveways. So you get a lot of miles done that way. But if they run out just right, they might have one lane done and another lane not. So then, and it might rain the next day, so it might be that way for a few days. But we have signs up that say no center line and do not pass, pass with care, so liability wise, we're covered.
It was just an unusual situation this year to see that happen.
Well, it happens.
You drive down the road, one side you got fresh grit, on the other side you're towing it. And the driveways are done and they, I mean, it's just, it's interesting to see how the procedure went.
It happens every year, you just got fortunate it rained another fifth time. So they've got, the, the guys know what they're doing, they got that system down pretty good. And, uh, normally we, in the past, we've only done like twenty-seven miles. We're trying to ramp up so we can get more seal coating done, we're getting behind on the second seals. So next year, we got in the budget to do forty-five or six miles. So we're gonna try to average somewhere in the mid-thirties now here for the next five years or so.
I think it's important, I think that, that helps a lot to pull that work together.
Yeah.
It holds the highway together, the road surface together longer and costs us less than the end.
And we think with the extra mon- money that's been put on surfaces, there's less patching so we can cut back on the patchy dollars, throw that into the seal coating. I think we're eventually getting ahead here and it's a good deal.
I'll move to accept motor file. Second.
Hey, a motion second, any other discussion? Seeing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Carrie, you?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning, Carrie.
Morning. I brought rain this evening, as you can see. I don't know, there's dirt falling over my head this year.
We need to talk.
We were getting dry. It hasn't rained since last night.
Um, thank you for inviting me, Carrie Nesky with Area Two and also RCRCA, Marshall. Don't recall which one you have first on your agenda for updates, if that's Area Two or RCRCA? Let's start with Area Two. Um, I did provide a little three-page handout. As you'll see from a little sticker on the front, we are celebrating our fortieth anniversary. Area Two's been around since nineteen seventy-eight, believe it or not. Um, even more surprising, I've been there for twenty-five years myself. So it's making me feel really old. And normal. Um, starting at the top of the page, um, for Area Two, we're looking at the last fiscal year, so I'm basically looking July first of last year through June thirtieth of this year. We're in the same fiscal year as the state of Minnesota. Our staff is still small but sweet, myself as executive director. We have an engineering intern, George Shepherd. He too will be there twenty-five years as of October. He's kind of my work husband, we always joke. And then Dwayne Hansel, I'm sure everybody knows him through Bolton and May. He is still ninety percent retired from Bolton and May, but works one day a week for Area Two. And so we enjoy having, having him on staff as well. Uh, the project accomplishments, we'll skip, as I've got that as a separate page. As far as ongoing, uh, projects, normally I've got a page half a sheet long. This year's a little different story. We, uh, think we've been working on these three projects for about three months. Happily, we, the first two are done, the Northern Six Route Retention in Lyon County and a grade stabilization in Murray County, finished up last week. Um, River Falls eighteen, that was actually built last fall, but there's a little bit of repair work after the floods that we had in July. Um, so the contractor will come back before we release that five percent retainer. And then lastly, we're actually working outside of our boundary on a project in Renville County. It's just on the north side of the city of Morton, up on the hill. And it's a, uh, existing dam that had washed out from... I don't even recall which year, but they had some severe flooding up there. And so it had washed the pipe out. And they had received disaster relief funds to do that, but they didn't have any engineering services. So they had asked kind of special permission for Area Two and we said, sure, we had time. So we're in the process of rebuilding that one. Uh, that one is just about done as well, so we're making headway now that the rains are kind of starting to slow down. As far as Brown County projects, um, we are working with the Slough and Water District pretty closely. Uh, there's a potential grade stabilization or dam in Leavenworth Township, section eleven, that we're working with. Uh, lots of trees, lots of habitats, it's gonna be, it's not gonna be an easy one, but not to say it can't be done. And then there's also a lot of small dam repairs that we've worked with the Slough and Water staff on. Um, basically contacting those landowners, letting them know that there's seventy-five percent cost share available if they'd like to rehabilitate those dams. Uh, those dams mostly have the corrugated metal pipes, were built in the sixties and seventies and they're pretty much nearing the end of their lives. We come in, fairly inexpensive repair, normally anywhere between twenty to thirty thousand dollars, but we replace that with concrete pipe, so we know that that pipe will be there long past our lifetimes. And, um, works, usually works out really well, the landlords are interested in that. Moving on to legislative and financial information. Um, our biennial appropriation that we received from the state of Minnesota, we're in the second year of that appropriation and that's a hundred and forty thousand dollars a year. In addition, the nine member counties provide eighty-seven thousand dollars for the administration of our joint powers board. That has stayed the same, that eighty-seven thousand for many years, we haven't raised that. So it's, we've been real cost effective in keeping our admin expenses down. Um, legislatively, we did receive seven hundred thousand in bonding this session. We did ask for a million, but of course there were concessions made all around. We did receive seven hundred thousand, which is great. Um, funds should become available roughly October first. Um, we've got a lineup of projects ready to encumber those funds to, so we'll be busy with that. And then lastly, last December, we renewed the joint powers agreement. We do a two-year agreement, just in case anything would come up in the meantime. So, um, all other terms and conditions are unchanged, just a new ending date of December thirty-first of two thousand and nineteen. For project funding, uh, we have a little bit of bonding left from our previous appropriation of a million dollars. There's roughly thirty-two thousand dollars left. Majority of that is going to cover a lot of the engineering expenses that we have on, on projects. That's eligible expense. And so we usually claim that at the end, once we get as much construction done as possible. And then I do have the new appropriation of seven hundred thousand down. As far the levy that we request from Brown County, that too has been unchanged for quite a few years now. Um, twelve thousand nine hundred seventy-one dollars. And we collect that at the end of our fiscal year, so this would not be due to Area Two until next June. And then lastly, on that first page is just a reminder, we always have a legislative gathering jointly with, um, RCRCA. And that is going to be Thursday, November first, in Redwood Falls. Um, I believe there is an AMC regional meeting. I don't know if Brown County's impacted by that, but the rest of the counties are.
That would be the more of the southwest part of the state.
Yeah, and that meeting, I believe, is in Jackson that morning. And so we're doing it in the afternoon, um, in Redwood Falls that afternoon. And then we'll have a evening meal to go along with that. Any questions on page one? Now, let's flip to page two. Uh, this is just a list of our completed projects for our last fiscal year, again, July first through June thirtieth. Um, you'll see there was a number, I don't know exactly how many projects there were, but a number of them, majority of them were in Lyon, Redwood, Lincoln and Murray counties. And the little box down on the bottom right-hand side is, pretty much tells the story. It just shows you how much was bonding, how much was federal, local, um, county funds, landowner funds. And as you can see, we're, we're extending. We didn't have all that other cost share funds to help our funds go further. We're also doing the same with, um, a lot of the federal funds. They can't pay for an entire project, but when they combine it with our funding, we can get a lot more done together. So it's a very good year, about seven hundred seventy-eight thousand dollars worth of projects on the ground. For pictures, um, at the bottom of that page, there is a link to our website. And there's a lot of before and after photos, if you want to see those.
And just a reminder for the, for the, this board that as you go through these projects down here, the projects that are in Redwood, Lyon, anywhere to the northwest of Brown County, those would, would impact Brown County from the standpoint that that's where the water comes, comes through Brown County. And so if we can slow down the water before it starts coming here, it helps us to reduce the flooding comparable to what we saw in the summer. But, uh, yes, we don't get the projects necessarily so much in Brown County, but we benefit from the projects.
When you look at the topography of the area, the retention possibilities in Redwood and Lyon are just a little bit more feasible. There are more volume for the project in those areas. When you get to Brown County, it kind of flattens out more. And so a lot of times you're impacting more crop ground and gets a little bit more difficult to do. But, um, Dennis was completely right, that we do try to keep it up higher in the watershed and then that better sit for everybody downstream.
And we do have a couple of new commissioners that, and I don't know if they've heard this before or not, but it's something I, I, it was impressed by the fact that, I never thought of this. Our, our water starts in eastern southwest of the west, where the runoff starts going down to Minnesota, or the Cottonwood and Redwood down to Minnesota and Mississippi. And if you take the elevation in, in New Orleans and the elevation where the water starts, Redwood Falls, I believe, is the average, is the mean elevation. So the water is running much faster from the time it gets where it starts to Redwood Falls than it is to Redwood Falls in New Orleans. So we, that's an important part of making sure that we, we do the diligence to slow the water down where it's coming, that it's really fast.
I usually have to make that kind of comparison at the legislature too, because they always hear about all the flooding in the Red River Valley and think how terrible that is. And when I tell them about the flooding we have, I tell them it's, it's like taking a cup of coffee and pouring it down the top of, well, the Red River Valley is if you spill a cup of coffee on your kitchen floor and it just covers all over. That's the kind of flooding they have. Our flooding is we're standing on a childhood slide and we're pouring that same cup of coffee and it's just gaining speed and strength as it goes down. And so that tends to kind of turn the light bulb on to realize that Minnesota is that different from one, one area to the other.
Mr. Chairman, a specific Brown County example would be from the Wellner Hagaman Dam to New Ulm. There's three hundred seventy feet in elevation change. From New Ulm to New Orleans, it's eight hundred feet.
Amazing.
I am.
And specifically with the Wellner Hagaman Dam, we were at the park commission meeting last night. With one of the recent rains, the dam, the flood control level went up over ten feet overnight with the rain. And of course, the system then channels it out.
Those are, those are the, that's the purpose of having, uh, the dams you talked about. It's, we're trying, the purpose, and I believe it's right, is that we're trying to, to slow down the water by holding them back and then it can pond in these areas and then slowly be released to go through the system. I mean, Brown County was on the receiving end of the flood area in July. So we all got an opportunity to see how bad it could get. We need to continue to work toward slowing it down. The bad part, the water didn't go all the way to the south Dakota part of it. It started in only fifty miles west of us. And, uh, but I think we, we need to keep working toward that. And that's Area Two doing excellent job on that.
When the governor was out to look at the flood damages and, but when he stopped in Wallmacrow and they were hit really hard, they had gotten eleven inches of rain within six, seven hours. And, um, there was a lot of damage, a lot of roads washed out and culprits and whatnot. And, um, everyone did a great job because they kept saying, it's like, you know, and this is what happened when we had floodwater retentions on the ground. Can you imagine how worse it would be if we didn't have Lake Laura holding all that water back there? There were some real impressive photos of the project working, so it was... I mean, there were some damages, don't get me wrong, but when you have a storm that big, which I'm sure it was well over a five-hundred deer storm, that, you know, it's common to expect those kind of damages, but, um, a lot of them worked and that's what we needed.
And I, I was actually, we have a camper, uh, on Chatek. And, uh, we happened to be staying there that night and it rained and it rained and it rained and I, I just didn't know if it was ever gonna quit. And the next morning I walked, we walked down to the lake and where the, the water crossed, where you cross out on the dikes, uh, to go out to islands in Chatek. The water was going over the first dike at that moment. The day before we had went across there, the water level was almost five feet lower. Uh, and it's now, let's go back and look at it, I didn't pay much attention, but now I'm gonna go back, we drive through and you look at there, you know, yeah, I could stand on the water level and, you know, I happened to be about the top of the road and you could see water going over, so you know how fast, how much water and how fast it gets there. And it, so it is, it is really important to retain that water, to slow it down. And I think that's a process we need to keep putting out to our legislators because that helps us to be able to survive these rain systems that happen now. So, um, I keep encouraging you, I, I believe strongly that it's a positive for, for what we're doing. And I know, I hear some people talking about we need, we should take some dams out now. I don't agree with what they said there. I've, I've been hearing some people talk about taking some of these dams from back in the fifties back out again because they don't think they're working.
It depends on the purpose and where they're at, I think. Um, you know, like on the Cottonwood River at Lamberton and at Sandborne, there's three dams that are, are tentatively being taken out and they're gonna be replaced with, you know, ripples and rock weirs. And from that perspective, I was supportive of it because they weren't, they weren't flood control dams. They were basically built, well, I know the one at Lamberton for sure was to form ice so that they could cut ice, you know, back in the day. Um, the ones in Sandborne, I'm not sure what their purpose was. I know the one in the golf course, they used for irrigation. And they, they'll still have that ability even with the rock weirs that are being replaced. So in that perspective, I can see it. But if they're, they're saying more of the flood control ones, southwest Minnesota needs them. So if there's proposal to remove them, I, I don't think I'd support that too much.
Carrie, is there, as far as water retention, is there any new projects or new ideas? I mean, if you look at Lyon County and Lincoln County, I, I get out there quite a bit and there's... To me, there's a lot of potential out there for water holding and water retention. Is there any new, new ideas or new projects in those areas that we see coming down the road at all? Or what's your thoughts on that?
Um, as far as more like a, in, instead of the typical, you know, using a road retention or a dam, a different type of project? We did complete one in Lincoln County last year. It was, um, I'm not sure what you wanna call it. It was a county ditch system that they were looking at, probably about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of repair to it. And two landowners downstream, um, did the rim and the crack, and so they had wetland restorations. So what the plan decided to be was that instead of replacing all that tile, that pumping station would be used, that they'd actually break that tile and get that water pumped into those wetlands that were restored. But the problem was they didn't have money for this pumping station, which turned out to be about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, I would say. Area Two was able to come in to use bonding funds to pay for that pump station in addition to all the other state funds for the, the wetland restorations. And so that's kind of a pilot project, but there's a lot of, um, counties with ditches that have got the same problem, a lot of aging infrastructure. And that if they can do something similar to that, where they can, you know, kind of bypass the, the bad areas and pump it into a wetland restoration, that that's getting a lot of, um, attention. Um, our intention was to do kind of tour in that area. The floods kind of sidetracked that tour this summer. Not to say it isn't gonna happen, but, um, if and when we get that arranged, we'll be sharing that Brown County one. It is, it's kind of a successful one.
And a project like that kind of works along the same basis, is what we talk about, the flooding, flood control, sure, with the dams that we put in it. The water is taken out of the process of going downstream as fast as it can to get rid of it. And it puts it in place and holds it, it reduces the pressure on our, our drainage systems. I think it's a great idea when it can, when we can make those things work.
The, the last page of your handout is just a summary of the projects that we paid for with the two thousand sixteen bonding appropriation. And you've seen we're talking of this less... Again, the summary box at the bottom tells the story. It just shows you, you know, the total dollars spent between state, local, and federal funds, federal cost share. We're supposed to provide $1 local match for every $4, no, excuse me, $3 of state funds. So you can see we're better than that. We're actually putting in more local funds than what's required. But again, it's making our dollars go further, and everybody's dollars go further. Any other questions for Area 2?
I'll move to accept the annual report to include $12,971 in the 2019 budget.
I'll second that.
Motion second, any other discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
We'll move on to the RCERCA update. That's the other hat that I wear. And then this is the calendar year. RCERCA is a little different. They do run January 1st through December 31st. Makes it kind of nice for our bookkeeping because by the time you get one done, get an audit done, then you're ready to tackle the other one. As far as the first page, as you all know, RCERCA is largely grant-driven. Always has been, and probably always will be, which is good. You can see the list of ongoing grants that have got listed there. Majority of them are through Pollution Control Agency, Department of Ag. And then we're also working on the Discovery Farms site, which is a merger between Minnesota Ag Water Resources Center and Department of Ag. One that I forgot to list on here, as I was just sitting here, is that RCERCA will also be getting a bonding appropriation. The Lake Redwood Reclamation or the dredging project was funded by the legislature this year. So there's 7.3 million coming down to do that. It's not said and done. There's MCA, which is Minnesota Center for Environmental Advocacy, has questioned the legality of incorporating the LCCMR money into the bonding bill. So there has been some data requests from the state level. So I can't say that there isn't going to be hiccup or two along the way, but it's appropriated and it should be coming down and we're proceeding with it. I'll jump into kind of just a brief explanation of some of these grants and what their purposes are. The first one on there is a new grant application that I'll be doing. This is for clean water funds, that every year there's a new round of clean water funding. I'm going to be putting in one for Sleepy Eye Creek in the Cottonwood watershed and Three Mile Creek in the Redwood watershed. In the past, we've kind of focused on the really impaired watersheds. The ones we knew had problems, the landowners that are coming in, and we've got projects ready to go. We can't get them funded without having a lot of the information that they want, where you can prioritize the subwatershed, you target your practices, and you can measure your results. You don't get money. It just isn't working that way. So we're shifting gears. The state has got a non-point funding priority plan, and the number, there's three things. One addresses groundwater, one is something else. And the first one is finding those subwatersheds that are slightly impaired or close enough to meeting water quality standards that with money and some work, that they could possibly meet those standards. So that's why we've picked out Sleepy Eye Creek and Three Mile Creek with this most recent water quality monitoring that we've done the last year. Those two watersheds are closest to meeting especially the sediment. So that's what we're going to apply for, and hopefully we'll have some luck this year.
To me, the unusual thing about that is there are both probably more ag land, flat ag land-related type of drainage than anything else we can work with in the area. And we keep getting pointed at is that it's, A, runoff is a problem, and yet our cleanest water systems are the ones that they're kind of saying we shouldn't be.
And I live on Sleepy Eye Creek myself, 750 feet from it, so...
Sleepy Eye Creek runs through a lot of Redwood and a lot of Brown County.
So when I heard that from our consultant, I'm like, really? I was surprised to hear it.
I know. When you mentioned that the other day, I've been thinking about that. Like, this is... This makes me think differently about some of what they've been telling us.
That data, is that available publicly, or where would working to see?
It is. On the next page, one of the grants that we've been working with is called the Surface Water Assessment Grant. And it's, there's 24, then the Redwood and the Cottonwood, there's 24 streams and nine lakes that we've been intensively monitoring May through September of last year, and then also this year. And so this information is based off the last year's data, so it's real current, real legitimate. And let me get back to you where you can find it. I know on RCERCA's website, we have a summary of it, but also Pollution Control Agency, but also have a website. So it is established. The bottom of page one is an ongoing grant that RCERCA has had. I should look up how many years it's been. I'm guessing it must be 18 to 20 years that they've contracted the pollution control on this. It's the Watershed Pollution Load Monitoring Network. There are seven sites within the area, three in the Redwood, Minnesota River at Morton, Sleepy Eye Creek by Leavenworth, the Cottonwood at Leavenworth, and then Cottonwood here in New Ulm that get monitored 24 months out of, or 24 months, oh, you're 12 months out of the year. And it's mostly storm-related. And so July 4th and 5th, I was down on that crazy bridge taking examples. It wasn't fun. But again, very good data comes out of this program. Moving on to page two, that top one is the one that I just mentioned, that Surface Water Assessment Grant. The ones below that, what's called Watershed Restoration Protection Strategies, RAPs. I'm sure this is an acronym that you've started to hear as well. This is the latest planning effort from the state of Minnesota. What happened is that, how to make this really short, not confusing for you. The state of Minnesota decided to assess all the watersheds it has in 10 years. And so it started back in 2007. This is the last year of the 10 years that is doing it. And of course, the Redwood and the Cottonwood fall. We don't know how we got so lucky to bring up the rear. But we're just starting that assessment. All those prior watersheds that have done this, they've got this document. It shows you where the problems are, you know, with subwatersheds. And it helps you get that grant funding to fix your problems. That's why we're having trouble getting grant funding specifically, is because we don't have that data. But we're getting there. But again, that Surface Water Assessment Grant, for the first two years of that RAPs process, it's intensive water quality monitoring, and so that's what we're just finishing up this year. Then we will move into number two and three on your page, the Watershed Restoration Protection Strategies. We currently have a planning grant, which helps us pull together our, we call them our technical experts. So it's your environmental office people and the Swollen Water District people. You know, they know the watersheds, they know the problems that we have. And we call them our local worker. So we pull them together, and we're working with our consultant real closely to help identify this information and to get it going. Each of the watersheds, the Redwood and the Cottonwood, are going to be getting a considerable amount of money to get this document done. We hired White Associates to get the consultant to do this. We did have an RFP and went through an interview process. Each watershed is starting with $200,000 to start this process. In addition, over the next several fiscal years, we'll end up somewhere between $350,000 and $400,000 per watershed to get this effort done. Again, it does reimburse your county staff and your Swollen Water District staff for participating. Just, again, that's how important that technical information is to this effort. So that is what's going on. The next one is the Pesticide Monitoring Grant, Department of Ag. For over 30 years, Department of Ag in Minnesota has tested waters for pesticide residues. And they're up to now where they can test, I think, over 100 or detect over 100 different pesticides. Their program is actually one of the leading programs in the nation, which is really kind of neat to see. They contract with Area 2, excuse me, RCERCA, and we've got four sites that we monitor. One is on Three Mile Creek. The other three are existing sites that we already monitor. It's Redwood Falls, Redwood River just outside of Redwood Falls, Sleepy Eye Creek, and then New Ulm here on the Cottonwood. So it's a good, easy process for us to do. And they pay well. They reimburse you very well for your time and effort putting into that. Discovery Farms in Minnesota, that is our latest member. This is year two of that new project. That's in the middle of Redwood County, just four miles north of Wabashow. Discovery Farms, there's a link there. If you don't know much about it, it's really pretty interesting. It's actually field-scale data that a lot of farmers have more faith in. You know, they have all the river monitoring stuff, and yeah, you kind of raise some questions and wonder how they're getting their numbers. The Discovery Farms, it is onsite, measured off the tile lines and runoff off of the field that's being studied. And it's up to the date. You can click on the TROST site, it's called, and it'll tell you how many pulses are in that flume or have gone through the flume, or how many times that tile sampler has run. I mean, so it's real tiny data, so it's really interesting. We're learning a lot from ourselves. The last one on the page, on the Redwood River Trepidity Reduction Project. This was the last of the 319 grants that Minnesota had. We just finished up the end of June and submitted the final report last week. We got 12 projects on the ground with about $150,000 worth of grant funds. It was matched about 50/50 with $152,000, and it was a good project. One more note on that Lake Redwood project. Again, I mentioned it's 7.3 million. The city of Redwood Falls has about $900,000 of match that they're putting towards that. So we're looking at near roughly like $8.2 million for the project. The project does fall under LCCMR oversight. So I've been busting my hump this week trying to get a work plan and budget and attachments ready by Friday. They wanted very short notice. And then on September 13th, I get to go to the Twin Cities for a 10-minute presentation on my work plan too. So it's a lot of oversight, let's just put it that way. The last page, just a little bit about the administration of RCERCA. As you both know, Area 2 and RCERCA were co-located, we have the same office. We share some services of our personnel, which works out very, very well. The eight-member counties to RCERCA contribute $75,000 towards the budget. Like I said, even though we're grant-driven, that $75,000 helps kind of fill the gaps where the grants don't or serve as match to those grants in the event that we do need that. Again, as staff, myself, I'm serving as executive director. Joy Brunz is our office manager. She does the bookkeeping and also the part-time bookkeeping for Area 2. Sean Manuka is our water quality specialist. He's the one you'll see out doing most of the sampling. And then Bill Molsted, again, another retired engineer that just can't quite walk away. He still comes in and helps us as we need him. The levy for Brown County from for RCERCA is $10,050. Again, that too has not increased in a number of years. And then again, just another reminder of our legislative gathering. You'll all receive invitations individually, but just so you can save the date for your calendar.
Going to give a quick history to, we've got a couple of them, I'm sure, earlier than you, yeah. Area 2, RCERCA cover basically the same area. We have nine counties in the RCERCA and eight in Area 2. So we have eight of them duplicating, it's Locklear County that's...
Locklear County is the additional one, and that's the additional watershed also, Locklear watershed.
So we basically cover the same area, and about six years ago? Commissioner Lockter, kind of him and I talked a little bit, because I was on RCERCA and he was Area 2. We talked about, well, why don't we duplicate, you know, so we meet together because we were all going to meetings. And that's where kind of, I think, the beginning of merging some of the services and operations became part of it. And we worked through this, and we're at the point we're at now. It's proven to save us, I think, a significant amount of dollars by sharing an office. Marshall was the location we were at with Area 2. Redwood Falls was our office for the RCERCA. We're co-located in Marshall. It's been a good fit. We have, in most cases, same person serving on both boards. The board can, operation or management from each county. It's a commissioner on the Area 2 board from each county involved. On the RCERCA, it's a commissioner from each county. And a SWCD board member serving also. So we have a much bigger board with RCERCA. But we duplicate on the county commissioners almost all the way across the board. And so it saves counties money on per diem mileage. It saves Area 2, RCERCA on operations because we, Carrie is served on both, and we use the same office manager on both. We do have a few of the other employees that are separated, but it's been a good, really good fit. And so it's been a very positive thing. It's, I've had an opportunity to be involved with RCERCA since I started in Area 2. Probably about seven, eight years ago, I started with that one. So a lot of history with them, and been a very nice organization to work with from my standpoint. We do a lot of positive things. Just wanted to share a little history because I didn't know how much Tony and Dave knew about how, what's happened and where we're at and how it happened. And we meet monthly. I think we do a lot of things that are envied by much of the state. The legislators, at least our legislators, are very impressed by what happens. I can't say enough about their, quite proud of what we do. We are a little bit unique to the state. We're one of those that's managed to do things in a way that's, we kept going. Some organizations similarly started, but didn't survive. But we get, you receive very well when you go down to the state legislature.
They're always amazed at what we can get done in just a year with such a small staff. It's like that, that's just screaming efficiency when you can have that kind of success. Any other questions?
Okay, all right, any other discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. All right, thank you, Carrie.
Thank you very much.
Carrie.
We'll take a quick break, and get back in five minutes. All right, we'll call a meeting back to order. Amanda Mallory, welcome.
Good morning. Thank you. Well, we're just here, as we talked about last December. We've come in here to just give you guys an update on the AIS prevention program. Activities maybe that have been completed so far and what are planned for the future. So with that, I'm going to let Amanda, who is handling all that, take over.
So I guess I just wanted to check in and see if everyone's had a chance to look through some of the stuff that we've been doing since January. It's a pretty thorough list, I don't know if I need to go for point by point. But generally, we've been doing a lot of outreach through various media via Facebook. We did help to sponsor that KAR 11 commercial. I haven't seen it personally. I've watched on YouTube, but I haven't, I don't have KAR 11. So I don't know if anyone's seen it, but that was sponsored alongside 12 other counties. So it's kind of a group effort, and then put some billboards up. We also got some clusters put up in some of the bait shops. So we ordered some extra ones, and those have been going up as well. So I'll leave this with John nicely put up in his office. But yeah, so we've been doing a lot of outreach that way, and then also meeting with a lot of league managers. Folks are working at the landings more frequently just to kind of see what their concerns might be, what they're sort of looking for, and how we can support them in ensuring that we're not seeing a large influx of the AIS that we're trying to keep out of our waterways. So I guess, just wanted to see if there was any questions on that list first.
How much hands-on at the landing have we done?
We haven't, we haven't been focusing on hands-on at the landings per se. We've been doing a lot of outreach with folks, like the sportsmen's clubs, the kids groups, we've commented for H activities, and then outreach that way, DNR. We went to Flanders and did some presentations there. We're not quite sure the peaks and flows, ebbs and flows of when people are actually going to be getting landings. And so if it's not being used, it's not the best use of anyone's time to sit there on wait. But especially on a DNR landing, you do have to go through this ambassador training, which I did about a month ago, in order to be able to talk to people at their landings. And a large portion of landings in the county are run through the DNR. So that was something I made sure we went through as well. And I have been talking with some of the surrounding counties about their programs and what... And I did, I have been talking with some of the surrounding counties about their programs and when, when they use their people at the boat landings. And they say it's pretty, pretty hit and miss. Um, and it took them a couple of years to kind of come up with a schedule, but it's, it's pretty sparse. They just kind of do the big weekends like, like July.
Right, I was just gonna say, I think that it would be important to be there maybe on the big weekends, Fourth of July, the Labor Day, the, you know, when there's a lot of boats going in and out. The other thing, you know, even just being at the landing helps people in, a few times.
Right.
They talk with each other and they say, yeah, there was somebody at the landing last week, you know, whatever. So you maybe get more, um, utilization and, and more mileage out of that than you think.
Sure.
Just by the people that actually went through the landing that day. I just, I think it's important to have some of that being right there.
Yeah.
So that people...
I've been trying to drum up a little interest from some of the, like the sportsman's clubs groups and the volunteer groups, cause I'd really like to see them getting all those volunteers to go to the landings, um, because obviously we have a very small staff. And so if we can get those folks in on some of these trainings, if we can get them out there and talking to people and going to the landings and volunteering their time, I think we'll get a, a bigger bang of, you know, everyone's buck on that one. So that's sort of, I've been trying to draw up that interest, definitely. Um, but it's something we've definitely talked about is, you know, let's do the first year and then maybe if we see the need to hire someone specifically as a job, um, part-time.
And, and sometimes, you know, the, the people at the sportsmen and whatnot, they're aware of the issues. They're, and they want to do stuff to help do that too. But it's the people who don't go fishing that often, you know, that maybe, you know, two, three times a year or something and they're hopping around and they just aren't aware of those issues. And that's where somebody at the landing does make a difference, I think, to...
Yeah.
To help them know...
Sure.
That a zebra muscle is the size of a pinhead, you know, when it's born. So that's why it's so important, you can't see them. I mean, you're not gonna look in the paint and say, oh, gee, their zebra muscle is in their heads, so...
Yeah.
Has, the DNR, I'm assuming, has done something at Lake Hansker somewhere, right, or do we know that?
Or monitoring.
Right, have been there for a period of time watching, or do we know that?
Not that I know of.
Okay.
Yeah, and I did speak with the lake association to see if they've ever done any kind of outreach and they mostly say they put the docs in and make sure what they say on and so it's kind of, they're pretty a little key group. Um, so they weren't sure if that would have that volunteer base. So that is, you know, something that we're gonna try to address. And I have spoken with the DNR specifically about when their crews are there, you know, going to a landing and looking for anything that they might see while they're there, because if they're there mowing or what have you. Um, and they've said that they do try to incorporate a little bit of that, but it's not, they're remaining dogs. Anything else? So upcoming activities, we're gonna continue, we do a monthly radio spot and we make sure that we do the AIS messaging as well as there is the thirty seconds, um, for thirty second commercials that go on and off. So we've got those going and then we've got the kids fishing tournament coming up here in August, a couple of weeks, next week. Um, and then the environmental fair is coming up. Um, again, continuing to meet with some folks and making sure that we're addressing their concerns and I think that's the main point is continuing that outreach and education. Um, just letting people know that this is, this is actually something that's available too. I think it's a big thing, I know that everyone knows that the SWCD is around and I probably don't know that we're housing the AIS funding. So I think that's good to let them know we're available.
So the lake associations, have you, you talked with them and are they, are there indications of wanting to cooperate and to, to fund together to do some, um, you know, I'm sure it's not just the species that we're talking, uh, weeds and curly pond needs and those kinds of issues as well. So, um, have, have they mentioned any of that type of thing to...
I think typically what happens is that the city, so like Sleepy Eye for instance, they've treated the lake for curly pond need. And so I think what typically happens is that the city puts together a proposal goes to the sportsman's club and says, could you donate X amount of funding towards this project? And I think that they've worked together in the past. Um, I don't think that they have a large revenue, I know Lake Hansker does not. They don't what really dues or anything, so they don't have an active participation. Clear Lake doesn't really have a lake association. Sleepy Eye really doesn't, it's just kind of the sportsman's club, it's the pseudo, you know, go-to people. So there's not a really well-established, um, groups that way. So I think that's kind of some of the challenges that the lakes are seeing is that they don't have the, this large volunteer base, um, that's active. You know, sometimes people will sign five bucks in for the pontoon tour or whatever, but it's not really, they're not meeting monthly and that kind of stuff. So I think that's been the challenge for them. Um, so I think they're leaning pretty hard on the cities to kind of take up the mantle and do some of this. So that's when I started reaching out to some of the city managers to say, okay, what are you doing with this? And so that's kind of, it's been a meandering path, trying to find, figure out who's doing what. Um, but it's, it's not simple, I don't think. Um, and then DNR did not have any funding this year for treatments. So that was a big issue with there wasn't any grant funding available. Um, so that may be something that they're turning more to us, I think, in the future, is that cities are gonna be looking for this funding to help them. Uh, so I think that's something that maybe we need to talk about, how, how much, if anything, we may be able to assist with. Um, so that'll be maybe something to think about here moving forward.
I happen to be looking at the paper on one of your ads for the invasive species and, and there's something in there. Well, and I don't know if it's, if it's that, but in the fine print it talks about, um, how to handle bait. And there was something about disposing of worms on the ground is, is illegal or there was a way.
Right.
How are you supposed to handle worms?
Supposed to put it in a trash can.
Okay, not just on the ground.
No, it's just not...
But it says it's illegal to do that? Or it's, it's part of the...
I didn't make the law.
It's part of the legislative...
Yeah, you know, I mean, this came directly from the DNR, so, you know.
All right. All right, any other questions?
Well, thank you, appreciate your time this morning and we'll try to get touch of this, so if you have any questions, we'll contact.
Thanks for coming in. Those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, say aye.
Motion passes.
C, aye.
C, aye. Few weeks.
Yeah. Okay, Karen, your... Number eleven, or ten?
Number ten. Okay, this is a, um, agreement, um, for daycare preschool consultation. We provide, um, consultation, statutory required that all daycares have, um, an RN, um, come in at least once a month and look at their practices to make sure they're safe and under impression control guidelines. And then we also provide that same service to preschools and that's just an annual one. And preschools and daycares don't have to have public health do it, they can have an RN, um, do it. So there's other preschools and preschools and the schools are already in there. So it's already in the agreement with the schools, but, um, there are other daycares that we don't provide the service to, but these three have asked for other services. Um, and these are the same agreements except for the, um, increase in the, um, hourly cost, which corresponds to the school. Health, um, cost per hour that we, that we charge to recover costs and so on, kind of transferred here.
Make the motion to approve.
Second.
Motion second to approve the... Any other questions? Seeing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Number eleven.
Number eleven is along the same lines, so how we're doing, um, for the new coming school year. We, um, provide, um, school health to Comfrey, Sleepy Eye, public and private, Riverbend, New Ulm. Um, we provide, um, the, the school health service to the non-public and then to the public group, we provide support services um, for their screen, um, assessments that they have to do. And then in Springfield, we provide the school health for St. Rayfield's. And then in Springfield, um, we also provide support for their, um, vision and their screens as well at the public school. So, um, they're listed again, um, the rate of forty-five dollars per hour is increased from last time, but that was approved in May by the board. Um, so we, again, the agreement, um, was, was approved as well in May and we did have a few minor adjustments and the county attorney has reviewed them. I have noted how much those are on, um, the R and A, um, the attached updates for them. So this is a fairly similar agreement. At the end, I've noted that with New Ulm, um, District eighty-eight, they actually go by, um, exact numbers and so sometime in December I get actual enrollment numbers and I can even come back to if there has to be an adjustment made on each other prior to non-publics.
I'll move this one. Second.
Motion second, any other discussion? Seeing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Number twelve.
Number twelve, in sophistication of Virginia Brown County Leadership Program, Renee Kieran is joining me today. Um, she has expressed her interest in attending that. I think you're, most of you at least are familiar with that program. Um, several of our staff have been through it and they found it very, very beneficial to their career and to their, um, leadership ability at our, in our department. Um, I listed some of the, um, categories that they talk about in leadership and then the, um, the brochure is online this year. So it's not a paper one that I've seen, so a little bit different. Um, but we'd like to, um, have Kayla attend this year as, um, it's starting this fall and we have that budget.
The, the people I've seen go through it have had very positive results, so I, motion to approve that.
I'll second it. Hey, motion second, any other discussion? Seeing none, those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion passes. All right, thank you. Okay, Ruth, you're...
So this morning, I'll introduce, um, medical representative, Beth Fanning, she's a senior agency relationship manager at Medica Medicine and we all know White Moser. Um, we're here today to discuss a request, um, that the insurance committee, um, met and discussed, um, our, our pre-process that we had going through this year, a request for proposals from health insurance carriers on, uh, employee health plans. Um, we did receive bids, bids from, um, Medica Blue Cross Blue Shield, um, Health Partners, online at Aetnoc, Preferred One and United Healthcare. Um, as you see here, attachments, um, Medica came in as our mobile bid. And so, uh, we're requesting the board to accept the health insurance bid received from Medica and approve the premium rates for the two thousand and nineteen Medica insurance plan. And these plans are the Medica sixty-six fifty thirteen thirty deductible, that would be HSA. Uh, single, um, amount would be, premium amount would be five hundred sixty-four dollars sixty-two cents and the family premium would be one thousand five hundred twenty-four dollars thirty-four cents. The Medica forty-five hundred, nine thousand deductible with an HSA. Single premium, six hundred and forty-eight dollars ninety-four cents and family premium, one thousand seven hundred fifty-one dollars ninety-eight cents. The Medica twenty-seven hundred fifty-four hundred with HSA in it was what we consider our base plan. That single premium is seven hundred forty-seven dollars fourteen cents per month and family is two thousand seventeen, um, and ten cents per month. And the Medica low deductible plan is the three hundred, six hundred, um, single premium would be nine hundred seventeen dollars seventy-one cents and the family is, uh, the premium would be two thousand four hundred seventy-seven dollars ninety cents. Um, the payment of the county share, employee share will be according to the personnel policy and union contracts. Just to note, we did, um, uh, drop the five hundred one thousand, um, requ, our plan request, um, for proposal and added the six, the higher deductible, sixty-six fifty thirteen thirty. We just saw that the low deductibles, um, the, the participation was very low and also we decided that three, three hundred, six hundred, um, we could continue without bringing that, um, and some low deductible, but just continue the five hundred.
I noticed the trend in this is for, with the insurance reps here, um, in a number of these, it's gone down, you know, fourteen, fifteen, ten percent. What's, what's going on in the industry that's causing it to go the other way now?
Well, for one of the things, the claims experience became better this last year now. So when it went out for bid, uh, if we would've had the same claims experience going on right now as we did the year prior, I would assume that we probably would've been looking at, uh, you know, ten, fifteen percent increase over and above what the, what the rates were at the present time. But since the claims experience now was, was much better than the competitors wanted to, uh, to get a part of, piece of the pie here, so...
I guess, Mr. Turf, I could make a couple of comments. Um, one, you know, there, we've received more bids than we've received in a long time, as far as I know. Uh, there were seven, seven, uh, contracts that were, uh, bid. And so we got a very nice cross-section of what was out there. The bids were opened and, uh, very carefully reviewed by, um, the county here as we opened them to confirm benefit, uh, discussion and what was there and what wasn't there. And, uh, we did not allow any changes to, uh, contracts or, or, uh, companies requesting, uh, final offers or, or changes to things that they didn't, uh, specify and the deviations of the one plan to the next, you know. Um, so that was, uh, controlled to not, to be fair and equitable, I mean, and that, that's the only thing you can do. The plans as far as, um, coverage, the twenty-seven hundred is the, is the base plan. But there was a special, and I'm trying to remember and I can't off the top of my head, no, the, the, um, there was one of the forty-five hundred of the sixty-six fifty has a, uh, contract, one of those two contracts has a prescription drug, um...
The forty-five hundred would now be considered a credible plan, um, as, uh, in regards to the, um, medic, Medicare requirements, um, that for those who are age sixty-five and older, they would need to have, uh, credible coverage, um, for the prescriptions.
So they don't get penalized for...
So they don't get penalized. And now our, in the past, our forty-five hundred was not a credible plan, but going forward, um, this, uh, for two thousand nineteen...
So the twenty-seven hundred and forty-five hundred are creditable.
As well as the low deductible, three hundred.
And, yeah, well, yes, and, uh, then there is a plan that has some ACA, um...
Maintenance prescriptions.
Maintenance prescriptions covered at a hundred percent.
In the forty-five hundred.
And that's in the forty-five hundred plan. And so, um, if we go ahead and approve this contract, I would want to make sure that that is, um, related to the employees so that they make, uh, they have a good, uh, choice of, uh, and, and to know that that's the only contract that has that, you know, in a, in a six, six thirty, there's no guarantee that's...
I think in the committee too, we talked about, you know, switching from Health Partners to Medico. There's some concerns that, you know, just making sure that that was gonna be seamless and we felt that that was going to happen and, um, these companies have enough people in there to, to assist us and if there are questions or concerns, so we felt that that was very minor, so we, we should move ahead with this, I guess, the committee felt. Anytime you can get a reduction... Anytime you can get a reduction in your premium, we need to take up soon.
And we appreciate you coming down and being able to put a face with the, you know, company and the contract. And we are assuming that you're, would help be support staff for Dwight and.
Absolutely, I understand. There'll be a health fair on October thirty-first, so we will participate in that to educate employees on the plan as well as the value adds that Medica offers. And this is for the open enrollment.
I'll move to approve it. I'm going with Medica.
And I will second it.
I abstain from this whole.
Any other questions or concerns? Any other discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Attorney, call a room.
Commissioner Burr?
Yes.
Commissioner Burkert?
Yes.
Mr. Potter?
Yes.
Commissioner Winchell, you're abstaining? And Commissioner Seton?
Yes.
Motion passes. All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you in business.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks for coming up.
We appreciate the business too, thank you very much.
Well, should we go ahead, Ruth, and do yours and then we can wait with.
Should we do that? Okay. If that was for you.
Is that okay?
Unless you want me to come back?
Well, let's, let's move ahead.
All right.
Number fifteen.
This request is to, for the board to consider the back, the pack assigned points. And this would be effective January second, two thousand and nineteen, through the vocational review process. And these will be for the assessor, or excuse me, the highway department positions. The county engineer was pointing four hundred and thirty-four points and that integrated is a twenty-two. The assistant county engineer, three hundred and eighty points, integrated twenty, twenty, or excuse me, nineteen. The accountant, three hundred and fifteen points, grade fifteen. The accountant assistant, hundred and eleven points, grade eight. The Roden Bridge State Building Construction Inspector, three hundred and twenty-five points, grade fifteen. Engineering instrument technician, two hundred and eighty points, would be grade thirteen. And the marketing agent, eight hundred and fifteen points, grade eight. So these were pointed by the pack and asking the board to close the vocational review.
I'll make a motion to approve.
And I'll second it.
There's a motion second for approval, is there any discussion?
I wanted to add, add that I think with the accounting positions, they had a couple of great jumps in there. But the change has been that they now deal with a lot of state issues, numbers that have to be reported to the state and that's all changed. So their jobs have taken on a lot more responsibility, that's why you see the extra jump there.
Like, was there a change in the description too on that?
In the education.
The requirements, so.
Right. The nature of the work does, you know, does look, need more of an accounting training of some sort. So a degree in accounting or financial management of some sort for the understanding of how the, the whole highway department accounting needs to be done. The cost accounting and everything else that all that they have to do. So it's a pretty detailed, the principles of accounting should be known in order to be able to function in that position.
I think it's probably a table, but the, you got in there, you have board action requested and then it says the following, assessor department positions.
It should be highway, yep.
Okay.
So I, I think overall, there was, there's more requirements for some of the positions there and then there's, there's some safety concerns and things like that.
Yeah, certifications with other state required, maybe federal too, I guess, requirements of the duties that they have to have certifications and so forth as well. So licenses.
Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Sixteen.
And this request is asking the board to approve the appointment of Lisa Croll as our full-time office support specialist. And that would be in the Human Services Department, effective August sixteenth, two thousand and eighteen. And that hourly rate would be fourteen point six eight zero seven, that's grade seven, step two. We are, will be doing a pre-employment screening since it's a human services position. And so we will, so her appointment is pending those successful completion of those screenings.
Move it. Second.
Motion second. Any other discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Seventeen.
And this request is to approve the appointment of Jeremy Reed as our full-time Sheriff's Department Investigator. And that would be at the hourly rate of thirty-three point eight four nine nine, that's grade seventeen, step eighteen. And the effective date would be August tenth, two thousand and eighteen. And also approving vacation accruals, starting at the five-year accrual level. And then we are asking to authorize to post the vacancy that, for the position he currently holds as an intermittent part-time deputy sheriff, court security, according to the policy.
I'll move it.
I'll second it. Motion second, any other discussion? Seeing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Eighteen.
And this request is to accept the resignation of Gordy Zolstor as a full-time correctional officer. And that would be effective July twenty-fifth, two thousand and eighteen. And we're asking the board to ratify the posting for the vacancy of a full-time correctional officer according to the policy and contract. With the resignation and the board meeting a couple of weeks later, we wanted to get that position out there so we could get some candidates in and did that, until as soon as possible.
Move it. Second.
Motion second, any other discussion? Seeing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Nineteen.
And this request is to approve the appointment of Barbara Christensen as a full-time social worker, physical and mental health facilities at the bachelor's level. Social worker position, hourly rate of thirty point two four four three, that's grade fourteen, step twenty-four. With the anticipated start date of August thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen. And of course, that would be pending for the successful completion of pre-employment screenings due to it being a department of human services position. And then also requesting to start her vacation accrual at the five-year accrual level as well.
Mr. Chairman, just a quick note through the interview process and the acceptance. We're glad to have Barb Christensen back because she actually did this work for Brown County for close to twenty years. Went to Nicola County, did the same work as a supervisor for a number of years. Actually is currently employed by the state of Minnesota DHS as a supervisor in this area. And she wants to come back home, so that's why there's a, there's a high level of step here and she's coming back.
I'll move it.
Second.
Okay, motion second. Any other discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Twenty-one, a.
And this request is to approve the appointment of Kristin Borser as a full-time social worker, the family facilitator position. And that would be at the hourly rate of twenty-two point one three four zero, that's grade fourteen entry level. And her anticipated start date would be August twentieth, two thousand and eighteen, pending successful completion of the pre-employment screening as well.
I'll move it. Second.
Motion second, any other discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Number B.
And this request is for the board to approve the resignation of Diane Dunn as the full-time appraiser in the assessor's office and approve the appointment of Diane Dunn as the full-time deputy assessor at the hourly rate of twenty-three point three seven zero seven, that's grade fifteen entry level. The start date would be tomorrow, August eighth, two thousand and eighteen. And being that she's our current appraiser in that department, we're asking to post for that position now due to the, her will need to transfer into the, into the other position until we post it according to policy then.
Move it.
I'll second it. Motion second, any other discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, thank you, Ruth. Could you see if Lane was out?
Sounds like we could keep the door open.
Okay. Yep.
Do you want to move to twenty? Commissioner Potter, did you want to?
Oh, sure. This is the time we make a decision on. We've talked about the base issue, which is the property of Suss Clean Energy Program. We've, we've had, I think, four of us had a presentation at district meeting. I did a little more research on information. Brown County has not had a project in it by the base program. This is through the Rural Clean Energy, or the Rural Energy Board. This will not affect our membership of Rural Energy Board. This is, it's combined by a separate process, so anyway, this is based on just this process, whether we're interested in putting money forward to keep that program working, at least from Brown County standpoint. So we haven't had any, any projects in accounting. They have done a couple of energy assessments in Comfray. The individuals who went through the energy audit decided to do the process through one of the local, develop EDAs over there, or some place like that. So that was how that was handled. We do have the option to do this, we could fund this project on our own through the county and run it through our partners program. That's another possibility. Or we can just not have it available in Brown County. To me, it's a lot of money for us not having any activity in it. And the, the dollars they're asking for are dollars that will operate the administrative part of it. Because when this grant was started, there was, it was not set up to have administrative dollars come out of there. So there's nothing for, for operating this program for the people working with the base program. It's run through the Southwest Initiative Foundation in Slayton. Okay, anyway, I got questions. I'm, it's not something that we've had any, I've had any experience working here with. We've had, we talk about it in our meetings, but some counties are fairly active in it. I think the two active, most active, I think are Jackson and Cockwood Counties. Does a lot of things, for those of, I don't know if anybody remembers when we did the energy audit with courthouse, with the county buildings. I'm trying to figure out how far I'm going back with that. So there was anybody was on there at that point, that we did the energy audit and a company came in, most of it's lighting. And like, it tells you how, whatever you do for energy with the energy audit, how long you would do, take to get a repay your, the cost of your, of your improvements done. So we went through that once we did the lighting here, a similar type of issue. This one is available to agriculture where oftentimes economic development does not include agriculture. But it's, I think this is through the USDA, if I remember correctly. I personally really have difficult times to put the six, the dollars involved. As at the Energy Board, we talked about this. Most of the counties did not have activity within them or very little activity. We're questioning whether they would support the, the organization's continuation of it. We are questioning.
We haven't contributed money to this.
No, this has been run, this is first. If this program is going to continue, it needs to be an ongoing. And this would not be just a one-time thing, this would be an ongoing process to keep this going. Because again, they, when they started it, they didn't put dollars in to administrate the project, so we're having to do those locally. And just going to kind of doom the process if they don't get some kind of funding for that. Like, those counties are, are, are going to have to work something out.
Mr. Chairman, the dollar amount, as Commissioner Potter stated, you know, six thousand three thirty-six, that's a, and that is not going to get smaller and it's not going to go away. And without any projects here, I, I've looked into the space program somewhat and, you know, it does have some, some good qualities to it. But, but it's all dependent upon the business to want to make improvements to their energy efficiency. And, you know, if it's large enough, the, then they could take a loan and pay it back through their cost savings supposedly. That's not always going to work every case, obviously, either. So I, I think I agree with Commissioner Potter, you know, it's another avenue, but it's also has a cost tag associated with it that I don't know that, that's an efficient use of our levy dollars, so.
That was my struggle with it, was it was just, we're, we're paying for things that, at least we're not using in Brown County at the time. If we, if we had usage of it, it probably would drift definitely, change your perspective of how you look at it.
I understand the concept of it, but I think if you look at our large agribusinesses, they're, they're doing this stuff already. They understand the advantages of putting in LED lighting and they're updating stuff as fast as they can. And I think large businesses are doing the same things, they, they understand it. The organization provides some numbers and it's nice to see that, but I think a lot of this is being done already, so. So I don't know if we need a, I guess, if we're not going to entertain the motion, do we need a motion of some type to?
We did get the request from the Energy Board for this appropriation. If the board doesn't favor that, we should state that by motion and put it on record, so we can notify and record it.
So I'll move to not fund or join the Rural Energy Board's space program.
I'll second it.
At this time. I wouldn't think that down the road, you wanted to get in later. I mean, it might be a bigger buy-in, but.
Yeah. I'm not sure how they're going to do this, they were trying to find ways to bail out. Problem goes back to about five years ago or so, I don't know when they were started. They just didn't set it up in a way that they could fund the local cost of operating the program. I mean, it takes, you, you, people don't find out about these programs just because it's sitting in an office and you can go in and do it. You have to go out and promote and that takes staff time, that takes staff time to administrate. But I, we didn't, at least I didn't see it at the time, I don't think everybody understood it, that there was not dollars for administration. I mean, if, I think we've all sat here long enough to know that most grants come through with a percentage of it is some kind of administrative dollars involved so that you can operate the program and it's not locally, it's not a local cost that way. So I, I, that's what I was concerned about and that's why they're in a point of being in a financial problem.
Okay, motion second, any other discussion? Okay, Moshe, a second, any other discussion? Seeing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, Lane, your turn.
Good morning.
Morning, Lane.
Our landfill permit that we now recently received allows us to apply untreated leachate only to the existing spray field. We produce about one point three million gallons of leachate per year out of a landfill. Our current spray field can only handle about a million gallons due to the fact that we've constructed or started the construction of cell twenty, which is going to eat up a sizable portion of that. So our, our alternative is to haul the leachate to the new wastewater treatment plant. The new spray field to the north needs to have background work, i.e. monitoring wells put in. We have to do some testing. That's going to be done next year. This contract will allow us to get rid of approximately three to four hundred thousand gallons of leachate. The leachate will be delivered to the lift station at nineteen seventeen South Valley. It's near where the shells were held since the twenty cell. The contract was looked over by our county attorney and also the city attorney that they utilize for, for the PUC. The total disposal fee is going to be about twenty thousand dollars. That's just to get rid of the leachate. The hauling does need to be determined.
So this is dependent on our, we still have to make up the proposal for the leachate plan, correct? And it's, this isn't, this isn't necessarily going to happen. It's really dependent on the plan moving forward and, I mean, it's, it's a possibility or part of the plan, possibly.
The leachate management plan has been submitted to the state. The, this contract is dependent upon how much leachate is produced. You know, if we only produce approximately a million gallons, then we can get rid of it on the spray field. We don't have, well, little or no hauling. If we have, you know, a million and a half gallons that is produced, we won't, or we will have to haul that approximately half a million gallons. Once the liner has been installed, we're, we're going to be treating that as, as stormwater up until we put garbage on it. So. Okay, put garbage on it, then it's going to be leachate and then we're going to be getting more water collected.
So, but it's still, the state has not, they have the plan, but they haven't accepted or has not been resolved.
They haven't acted on it.
Yeah.
Additional spray field.
The additional spray field.
That, that was one of the questions I was going to ask. Is, will we, was there a potential we could still use that additional, the new spray field?
The new spray field will, can only be used after we do this background testing. Having the well dug and.
And that's, that'll be determined next year.
Correct.
Two other questions then. Any idea what it will, you didn't, this doesn't include hauling, any indication of what hauling?
I have not received any quotes. We haven't walked through this or that.
Okay, then the other question is, will we be able to recycle some of the leachate back into the flat? Do garbage on the new cell at some point?
Once we get, I believe it's twenty feet of garbage on that, then we can start the process of.
Do you have any idea how much we'll be able to recycle that way?
Uh, it's not going to be very much in the beginning. Otherwise, the, the garbage gets too wet.
And in time, in time then, there is a possibility that we may not happen to be hauling possibly if we can get the, the other spray field going or if we can recycle enough leachate into that. That may help us to resolve so that we reduce out of this cost.
The demonstration research project that we are proposing to do next year will determine whether we can get the leachate clean enough where we can apply it to the new area to.
Unless we get more surprises.
Unless we get more surprises.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Have, we talked to the EPA at federal level on this at all yet?
No.
Is there a reason for that?
We've had lots of stuff going on in our office and.
I would like to make sure that we do contact them and, you know, possibly we could get some help out of that. And, and this is going to be a terribly expensive proposition. We start trucking at five thousand gallons of truckload. In addition to the twenty thousand this year, we have to do a million three and yet sixty-five thousand for the leachate plus the, the trucking would be. I don't know what the final result would have on our landfill. If that's going to be something that would even be feasible to distribute the cost of that and be a upper.
We, our permit will allow us to put untreated leachate on our existing spray field up until twenty twenty-one. And it's the treated leachate that we come up with. And we still need the parameters from the PCA. Once that is cleaned up, we will apply it to the north spray field after we have a background work done.
Now, I think it's important that when I talked to the EPA, they suggested to call them and that, you know, there's other, get a little background information before we make a call to make sure that they're aware of how many counties this is affecting in Minnesota. And, you know, we're not the only ones being affected by it. It just, it's a very expensive proposition here that we're, that we're looking at. And I would like to make sure we investigate all the possibilities there for.
Me, the frustration part of it is that by understanding leution is a process they use, that's still the process, the leachate, the part of the leachate that we have to haul? Or will they run it through the wastewater treatment?
It'll run through the wastewater treatment plant, but the constituents that we are getting hit on, the perfluoro carbons.
They can't take them all.
That doesn't get removed by the wastewater treatment.
Be honest with you, it's highly frustrating. It doesn't make any sense to me. I mean, if they can't remove it, then I'm not sure why we're hauling it there. I understand the legality of it.
Yes.
This is, I mean, it's been brought up before. Are, are they treating the different wells in your plan? Is it, are they being treated differently because of the PFCs might be worse in one than another? From where you draw, could you be able to apply? How many, how many different source points do you have again? That you pull leachate out of? And then the old system, not with the new one? It's going to be coming.
Source points mean like the.
Where you pull the leachate from?
The, the leachate comes from the line area of the landfill, which is basically the, the new generation landfill.
Right, it doesn't.
But we also have the sumps in some of the old area too. Are we still pumping that and including that in the leachate pond?
Yes.
So like it's pumped up for the leachate pond?
That's not that much.
Well, it isn't much, okay. So this, it's, it's just one, one area it pools in or collects in from.
To ponds outside of those other ones.
We have two ponds, yes.
There was, there was a difference in the PFCs from one to the other.
We have not tested the leachate on either, on the old stuff.
But, I mean, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Berg, I think that's a valid point. We do need to check that leachate in the old area because that's a whole different fill-in history than what we have in the new generation area. If, if that's a concentrated issue, we need to know that from those old area sumps.
Isn't that part of what, is it IES, I don't mind. Yeah. GEI was, was gonna, I mean, there's some options there of how, how this plan moves forward. And assuming with, with the permit or tiles and, and different wells that we have out there, how we mix and match and some of that, there's, there's options there of how we go forward.
There may be some of that.
Yeah, I, I think that was part of what the engineer was, was looking at. Okay, so do we have a, I don't remember if we have a motion or no.
We, we don't have choices here, we really do. I mean, it's, this is this or nothing. So.
This or that business.
Yeah. Much as I wish we had another option. I guess this is what we have to do with the thing, so I'll need to prove this because I don't see us having another option.
I'll second it. I think it would be good to talk to the federal people on this. I don't really think that the state, this is new ground for the state also. So, I mean, if there's some ideas from the federal government or, I don't know, information that we can find out, maybe not. But I think it's worth calling and seeing what they know, so.
Sometimes it's just education, whatever, too. And it's to, to know that the point of Commissioner Potter stated before, you know, this chemical's still being produced and still being sent out there. How does that make any sense? It, it doesn't. I, you know, we've got to quit producing it if we can't get rid of it. So they need to be sometimes made aware of those issues as well.
They're making us pay the penalty for what they're not doing.
Right. Right. We're the ones paying the penalty.
Yeah. But I, I think you're, have other, have there, in the meantime, have been any other landfills that have developed a positive or in the same situation we are because of this?
Not to my knowledge.
We got lucky, huh?
We were the first in the state and we're kind of the, the guinea pig, the test balloon, or as you.
My goodness, we got lucky and bought a lottery ticket instead of a landfill ticket.
I, I have been in communication with other solid waste officers and nobody that I've talked to has received a hit in their leachate as high as what we have. So that's why the state is coming down on us and that's, but it's coming. It's, other states have started acting on the PFC, PFAS problem and we, Minnesota's kind of late in the game. But it's, it's going to be more of an issue in years to come.
Well, and that's why, as Commissioner Sutton said, it stated that, you know, we need to test these areas that it's coming from to determine if we've got an area of maybe where we have extreme concentration that is, you know, a small flow of whatever, well, then trucking that away wouldn't be a big issue. So we really need to have those tests done in order to do that. And again, just to, you know, the EPA, when I, that, that card, the contact that I gave you when you have, is a very pleasant person. Again, was very, you know, confirmed that we were working on a federal pollution control and that she was interested in hearing from us, so.
Okay, we have a motion second on this contract. Any other discussion? Seeing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay, they are done with their business. C1 is missed from July twenty-fourth. C2 is AMC Information Annual Award Nominations, if you want to participate in that. C3 County Program Aid for two thousand nineteen.
And Commissioner, if you go to the, the first page is the law change and the county date. It actually was a small reduction over all of the dollars available. And on page two of four is the equalization aid formula. Page three of four, Brown County's aid is going down about twenty-six thousand for two thousand nineteen. What we did on this chart on two thousand nineteen, you see the numbers at the far right as what's certified for next year. On the far left is what counties received in two thousand eighteen for your, your information.
I thought I saw in here, Minister Henry, it said it would not go down. Earlier on here, I thought I highlighted it, maybe I didn't have it.
Well, if you look at page four of four, at the far, the last page, at the far right, the two thousand nineteen county program aid available to counties is two hundred thirty-three million nine hundred fifty-eight thousand. At the far left, in two thousand eighteen, it's two hundred and thirty-four million ninety thousand. So it's down a hundred and thirty thousand dollars statewide. So it's a minimum overall reduction. I'm not sure why that happened. So basically, it's the same dollar amount overall, but then they apply the formula and we lose twenty-six thousand dollars through the formula.
Okay, any other discussion on that?
Commissioner Winchell, you're looking at that paragraph on the first page, two thousand seventeen law changes. And it says the index value is rounded to the nearest ten dollars and cannot be lower than the previous year. Is that what you were thinking?
Yes, that's it. The index value is rounded to the nearest ten dollars and cannot be lower than the previous year.
Could we get some clarification of what that's supposed to be? The index value might not be the value that they're actually providing, so it's something that it's based on, which could give you a lesser dollar amount, but, and I wonder if that's what happened.
And we'll review this further in our budget meetings, but the message has been, if you go back ten years ago, six percent of our budget was funded by county program aid. Now it's less than three percent. So it's a continuing cost shift.
Okay, the last, last year we got an increase, what about the last two or three years? Did that a little bit of?
Last year there was an increase, the last couple of years have been. And with this new formula, the small counties, which had a large increase because they lost a lot of county program aid because the farm values went up dramatically. That's been restored for, especially you go to southwest Minnesota, a lot of those counties now are getting aid like they did a number of years ago. Because they were down to virtually nothing because of farmland values. So the formula increased, the increased dollars and the formula change helped many rural counties, small counties. So, the formula increased, the increased dollars and the formula change helped many rural counties, small counties. But then each year, it depends upon this formula application by the state as to their actual dollars.
Okay. All right, C4 is bridging Brown County. Their annual fundraiser in Sleepy Bay in October, information on that. And C5 would be the fall policy conference, we got handed out to us earlier.
Do, do commissioners know who's planning and attending so we can make reservations and registrations?
I'm not, I've got plans on the state at that time, so I'm not going to be going. I will, I have went the last two or three years. It is a good, today is well spent because you do get to work on policy. Much more time is spent there because as you're doing the preliminary stuff on policy now for the state meeting in December. It is excellent place to network with other commissioners. You get to, you, you get to meet with other commissioners and you go over things. To me, it's, it's worthwhile. It's, it's back in Alexandria, which is a much shorter drive than it was last year. Last year I decided to go to this and I didn't look close enough at where they were having it. And I found out after we left, I assumed it was back in Alexandria, so I drove up to Alexandria and got there and went, oh, it's a breezy point. I got two more hours to drive to get there. So, my wife and I had a brother experience adventure that evening, driving the last two hours to try to get from Alexandria to there. But it, nice facilities up there, they, they do a nice job. And I would encourage you, if you could get a way to go, it's just good, it's good for learning what AMC is like and what, what that, that particular part of the, the organization is, can do, it's an important part. We, I think policy is getting more important because I seriously look at this, you know, my colleagues, legislators, our state legislators are getting further away from us. They don't understand what's going on back here in our counties and we need to work to try to keep them aware. But now, you don't meet, they don't come up there to that meeting, but we do work on policy.
Do we have any known commitments here to attend? If, if not, whenever you know, let us, no one will make the reservations.
I'd like to go by cameras.
I went last year, I thought it was very good. I have a conflict with other county business, so I wouldn't be able to attend.
I have conflicts too, and I'm not going to be able to.
Okay, we can let Chuck on that, so.
We'll wait to hear from Commissioner Berg.
Well, I might be able to, I was just going to check my calendar here.
And, and we don't have to register today, just let us know.
Okay, the, is it correspondence, we'll go on the committee reports. Did you want to grab, bring her back to the beach?
Well, she was just asking if you guys approved that appointment. And I said, yeah, so then she.
If, if she wanted to come back, that's fine. Okay. Committee reports.
Mr. Ture, I had a South Central EMS meeting on July 26th at 1:15 Eagle Lake. And it was, um, it was pretty productive meeting. We had, um, just to address that $5,000 allocation, when we had Mark Griffin here giving us a presentation a little while back. We had talked about it, the state money's just not coming in. Again, a big part of that is seatbelt. And we're just not, we're not seeing there. And I, I think that there's several factors involved with it. One thing is seatbelts, just they're being used more. The other thing is they, they say that just enforcement in general, especially in the metro area, there's, there's less traffic enforcement. That's just the general cycle right now. So, anyway, um, we're at the point where if we don't do something, and you know, we have a statutory requirement to provide this, we actually had the commissioner down for, for the state. And what they'll do is, you know, we, they allocate so much, much funds, of course, with the seatbelt, they simply don't know from year to year, it changes month to month. They, they give a projection and it always comes in lower. So, you know, we'll actually go through the auditing function or we'll go through the function where we ask for funds and then they're like, okay, this is approved, that is an approved. But bottom line is, they never give us the amount of money that we're asking for, that, you know, technically would be justified having if they had funding available. So, we just simply, they just don't give it to us and that's the end of it. So, and, you know, this guy had some suggestions. You know, it all pretty much involves kind of what we're already doing, the counties, um, doing some type of contribution, they're looking at other type of fundraising activities. But I mean, I, I, I shared that I, I have a hard time with doing any type of fundraising, having our staff do things like that when their whole mission is to, you know, provide this, this service. So, I think that's something that we're going to have to address at the legislative level, talking with our senators and representatives from the state. Also, we talked about strategic planning, you know, that's something, there is one area that we've been having these, these strategic planning initiative meetings and I'm, I'm on that subcommittee. And, your Weller has been kind of our lead on that. He's a really good leader, he has a real solid background. And what we've done is we've done surveys from everybody, from all the, all the counties, from, from basically people that work in the field. And they've had, um, they did it for ambulance services, they did it for first responder, rescue squads. They've done it for, um, law enforcement and then regional EMS programs. And they've just asked, you know, what, what's your views, what, what's effective, what could we maybe get rid of? Maybe are there even areas with, you know, cost-effective programs that we could, could add to our, our service? And, you know, we're, that's still work in action, but we're really looking at, you know, we're going to have to focus on cutting maybe some, some programs. If there's something that we're providing that's only serving a certain amount of people, like David talked about the rehab. I think that's really important, just for a refreshment, that rehab program is like when they actually go out. So let's say we're fighting a fire for one of our, or a few of our fire departments for, you know, 24 hours or whatever the period of time is. And they actually go out, they assess, they're making sure that the firefighters aren't overdoing it. They're actually taking their blood pressure, they're making sure they're hydrated. So they're basically like the first responders for the first responders in a sense. That is maybe something that instead of us driving out there, it's something that they could train other services to do. One big thing that this commissioner had brought up, the state commissioner, is that when they, everything gets audited, all the funds that they, they provide us, we're really disproportionately high with mileage. So we spend a lot more than any other region in the state of Minnesota. And all the regions are having the same problem, seatbelt money's down, but it's, looks like financially we're the most strapped. We have less money actually in the bank. And like I said, we're at the point we can't, we can't operate anymore. They're going to have to do something because we have to pay staff or we're just not going to be able to provide this. So, you know, there's definitely something we have to, we have to look at doing differently. So it's not, not real great news, um, but it just is what it is. And that would conclude my report unless there's questions. Otherwise, um, Region Five Emergency Management Meeting, I went to that on August 1st at 9:30 a.m. in Marshall. And I went with Lynn Sletta and, and Roberts and Tella. And I'm involved with that, been appointed to work with, uh, as far as that EMS readiness grant. So what it basically is, and they had, at this meeting, they actually had our lobbyist down that's working on that. And then also the lead emergency manager from Norman County, he had done the presentation at the, at the last AMC conference. Anyway, the grant, what this would be is $3 million for 87 counties and other tribes and, um, four cities of the first class, which is like basically Minneapolis, St. Paul, Rochester and Duluth. It equates to $30,000 for our county. It, one, one interesting thing is it cannot be for supplanting, it can't be for replacement of, um, the EMPG grant. It, it also can't be used for like, if we have something in place already, we can't use, you know, initially they said you can use this for whatever, whatever you would want to use it for. It's, it's your business, you just simply, um, basically $30,000 is awarded for, for that county. That's not exactly the case, so I, you know, that's something where I'd like to just have a little discussion. Because we're thinking of, we've had prior discussions about maybe having another, um, emergency management director full-time. I, I support that, I think there's a need. But if we can't use this money in the future for that, I, I would like to at least have all the options available. So I think that's at least something we should have a discussion on. Then, um, the recommendations from, from lobbyists is, you know, when, when we're going forward with this, we have to, of course, have to be able to justify it to them, why, how this is a benefit to the constituents, the strength. And then, um, you know, having patience and being willing to kind of wait it out because it's not a, not a fast process. A lot of times there's a lot of hearings involved with it. But, um, I think we're on the right, right path. I, you know, it's $3 million for the state level isn't a lot of funds, so they're, they're cautiously optimistic that this will pass. And that would be about it for my report unless there's questions on that.
That's it. All I have is an act meeting and we went over into our process today, we approved it, we just upgraded, upgraded a few in the highway department.
Okay, South Gondryelf Alliance, uh, August 2nd, Lions in regular meeting. Compliance, um, they're going through making sure codes are up to date, uh, that type of thing. We got notification from CMS, um, of the, of an upcoming audit and this is the big one, they kept saying. And that's, what does that exactly mean? And, um, normally you get one of these every three years and we haven't had one since inception. So they knew what was coming and just a matter of when they finally hit with it. There's five areas that are audited. They're on site for a minimum of one and a half weeks. And then, uh, weeks 10 to 21, they do, uh, look at corrective action and, uh, through weeks 24 through 48. So basically, it's just short of a year of audit. So, uh, they're feeling, we, they've done some practice ones ahead of time, knowing that this would, would, would come eventually. And, um, really, you know, feel okay. Every place they ever go to though, does, they, they find something, okay? They're going to find something. So, they, they do have, uh, do expect that there will be some corrective action plans that will have to be drawn up and written up and that type of thing. But, uh, anyway, that's, that's, uh, from the compliance side, they're, one of their, um, big, um, things that are, that are coming up here. The, um, they had a couple more power outages in the month of July. Still looking into generators and systems there and we kind of had a discussion as to why that hasn't happened. And that is going to be further considered and looked into. The financial side here is pretty bleak this time. The current projection for 2019, uh, 2018, sorry. Like I said, you don't know that I have an actual projection for 2018. We're currently operating, at a operating loss of 9,681,000. Started out good for the first two months and then it started going bad. March, uh, we had a net income of $980,000 loss, April, $3,400,000, May, $6,900,000. And June, $9,681,000 we're at. They don't expect this to translate to double this amount by the end of the year. However, um, enrollment is about 2,000 less than anticipated. Mostly claims loss ratios have gone through the roof. Normally, you know, we expect to lose money on PMAP and, and Minnesota Care. Although we didn't expect that with the increase in, uh, I think was PMAP was like 17% increase. But the current Minnesota Care loss ratio is 102%, and, uh, PMAP is 100%. MSC plus is 83, so that's, you know, shining star there. Uh, single care is 102% and shared care is for, uh, 74%. So those are the Minnesota programs. And then the senior care was 92.9, these are federal, mobility care was 113.5 and total federal was 96.1 for, for their loss ratios. So, and the loss ratios have been, um, hit the hardest in the area of prescription drugs. And the new prescription drugs that are out are just, you know, really, really expensive. I know that we had, um, a couple of prescriptions, uh, to the tune of $700,000. That, that, that will still be reoccurring. Now, we do have, um, uh, we do have, uh, loss ratio, when it was their loss hits a certain level, there's an attachment point where we have reinsurance come in, um, that's set at 200,000. So, uh, there'll be some, you know, reinsurance money coming back and that, of course, our reinsurer is going to look at that next year again and no one say, you know, hold it down and look what happened here. So, um, some, some real concerns there. The current, uh, as far as staff, uh, they're holding, no further staff, vacated positions aren't being filled, they're, they're using, they're either not filling them or they're using temps if we have to have a, a person in that position. They, uh, did meet with DHS about, uh, these issues and the fact of the procurement issues that we've had. Prime West also met with them and, and so, as well as the other, uh, task of unit. There were some, um, legislators involved in the call, conference call, and, uh, they did, uh, to, to listen to what was going on. And, um, as far as for passing legislation in order to get, um, the procurement process, uh, straightened out. The state, the DHS said, well, it's a, it's a state issue, I don't know why the federal government's being involved here at all. And of course, we're saying, that's because you tell us every time that we go to get it, uh, there's a state legislative law that says that they do the procurement the way we want it to be done. But the DHS says, although there's a federal law that supersedes this, that overrides this. And so now, while they had the federal people on the line, they're saying, well, this is a state issue, it's not a federal issue. Well, they said, baloney, then why do you keep dragging this out and saying that it is a federal issue? So, didn't go real well, but, um, they did have a conversation and some of the legislators were, had, quit an eye opening into that. Okay, so, Um, okay, so, we're, with the, um, current, uh, payment, uh, we, we got through July. We always worry about July trying to make the payments and because the, the state withholds a percentage of our income back until, uh, well, they used to do it. Uh, in all these categories, from each one of those plans, they would hold it back thirty days. And this year, one of those plans was held back sixty days. Well, the truth of the matter is that costs us about forty thousand dollars in interest, them holding that payment back. And all it's doing is buying the state more time to be able to, uh, you know, make this payment. And the, this was again brought forward to the legislature as well. And there's a lot of them that aren't even aware that it happens and they're like, well, how would we correct this? Well, you'd have to pay, you'd make your payment on time, just like everybody else has to. But of course, that would cost them money and they would have, they, they've gotten themselves between a rock and a hard place. Now, let's make matters even worse, next year, they're gonna require that all of the plans have a sixty-day, uh, lag time on it instead of thirty. So they're just digging a hole deeper and, you know, they don't understand what's happening when they do that. And, uh, so when we talk to legislators, we gotta, uh, talk to them about withholding that, that, those payments and for, for those same timeframes. It's, it's, uh, not a good scenario. Um, budget setting, uh, we talked about the RBC, uh, what's happening there, the, that, the reserves that we have. Um, uh, wanted to see here someplace I have it written down. Okay, so, um, in two thousand sixteen, our RBC was at two hundred and twenty-three percent. Two thousand seventeen, we had raised it to two fifty-five and now at this point, we're thinking that two thousand eighteen will finish out at about one fifty-two. Uh, when it gets below two hundred, the state gets nervous and says they'd like to see, uh, that RBC get back up above two hundred. But it sounds to me like they really won't take action until it gets down to a hundred. And so we're keeping a close eye on that. We're gonna have, you know, see what, uh, what transpires there. Um, yeah, okay, net loss, uh, they're projecting two thousand eighteen is seven point three million. So they're hoping to have it come back, uh, somewhat. Um, it, bright spots, investment income was up three hundred thousand, administration cost is one point five million below budget. Um, revenue is two percent below, uh, budget though as well. Um, and the current loss ratio is at ninety-seven percent, um, ninety-four percent, sorry, ninety-four percent. Um, we talked about the possibility of having to have a capital call, having to, uh, have the counties look at contributing, uh, something to this. Um, obviously, we know that's not a popular thing. We have had a capital call in the past. Um, the, uh, if that happened, and we're just looking at here, they had done some estimations and they estimated that if they needed five point five million of additional capital, um, the, they broke down the cost by per member per month type situation. And, uh, Brown County share of a five point five million dollar capital call would be six point one percent or about three hundred and thirty-four thousand nine hundred and sixty-five dollars. Um, we, there are eleven counties and we are the third lowest county, the two counties that would be lesser than us and eight counties that would pay more than us. They aren't saying they're gonna be requiring a capital call, but they want us, because of budgeting time and whatnot now, to be aware of it. To be, um, you know, know that it could be out there. Um, this thing is a roller coaster all the time. And, um, they are of course, you know, in conversation with the, the people who set the dollar amounts and, and letting them see that, you know, this is not making money, that it's a, you know, bad scenario. Um, just looking here, claims under ten thousand, for example, um, in two thousand seventeen, uh, it was like seven hundred and ten thousand. In two thousand eighteen, there was four hundred and thirty-one thousand, uh, four hundred and thirty-one, uh, thousand. So there, that almost cut in half, but the claims from ten to fifty thousand went from one point one eight million to two point four seven million. So almost doubled, those larger claims. Um, that was dollars, sorry, that was dollars. Claim amounts, uh, claim Collins, but claim balance said the same thing. On the under ten thousand went from twenty-three hundred down to fifteen hundred and from ten thousand to five thou, fifty thousand, uh, went from a thousand to twenty-one hundred. So, uh, higher claims almost doubled and that's part of what's, what's happening there. Um, that's pretty much it for now. We will certainly be keeping you updated as to situation and.
It would be kind of curious, and I'm, I'm looking at this after twelve years, I've sat here longer than the rest of, except for Mr. Enters, listen to this longer than I have. But I think if we charted this over the, that time that I've been, and when Andy was doing it, it was, we would just see a chart that went like this. And year after year, I mean, it, we get a couple of years that you get positive stuff and then it turns into, we've heard the things about potential capital call. It's happened once, it's been talked about more, way more than that, uh, and I'm not downplaying it, but it's a very volatile scenario. I, I, I thought maybe they had finally figured out how to make it, to make it flow a little better, but now it looks like we're going back to the, or whatever this, this, I guess is the valley here now. It's tough Scott, I hear ya. It's, it's tough to go to those meetings and listen to what they had to say and it makes you wonder what, what the future is.
Yeah, it does. I, you know, there's no, no question about it.
And after twelve years, I haven't figured out who's at fault for it.
Yeah, it's, uh, you know, like I said, we, we talked about, you know, prescription drugs is the biggest outlier that, that, that is what is really taking us down now, uh, comparatively, you know, but, uh, it is what it is, you know?
Okay, um, all I've got, we talked about PAC, Tony talked about that a little bit, Christian Berg, um, the Highway, we talked about that earlier, and the Insurance Committee, we basically talked about, we approved the health insurance contracts. So that was discussed also, so that's all I've got, so.
Uh, I had Area Two, RCRC, there wasn't much, it was only an executive meeting, uh, along this past week. Um, so we, we had a light schedule and, uh, basically, uh, normal stuff going on. Went to the Parks Commission meeting last evening, uh, interesting meeting. Uh, talked about Frisbee Golf Course on Tremble Park, um, had an individual there promoting it. Uh, bottom line is they're kind of closing nine holes, I think, and about three to four thousand dollars for the cost. Uh, it is apparently, it appears there's a lot of leagues out there that are working. Um, as I sat and listened to it, it kind of, to me, indicated, and I asked the question, I said, uh, everybody pays to play golf, you know, isn't there some way you're working on something like this that at least you could be helping with the cost of doing these? Because I believe there's two golf, two Frisbee Golfs in New Ulm, Springfield's got one, Sleepy's got one, Mountain Creek's got one. And if we go and do another one in, in Tremble, that's a lot of them in the county, uh, a lot of courses. Uh, it'll be coming, the, the county park commission's tackled, is going over it now. We may discuss, this may become something for us in the future, but, um, I think there's a lot of questions to answer before we get to that point, we, it's a reality. Uh, talked about park, other parks, uh, Lake Hanska, uh, new, uh, person working there is working out well. So that's going good, uh, both, uh, everybody did, uh, did good reports on, uh, on his, what's going on there. Uh, Mountain Creek, um, Lane talked about Sioux Gate, they have not operated it, the one we had fixed last year yet because of the high water. But they will be doing that and they have procedure on how to make that work up and down a little bit. Um, and Area Two did come out, look at the, the dam, everything looked okay, we're, it looks like the, the pismeter, is that pismeter readings at lower end of, of the, your dam are, are, uh, stationary, they, they were happy with those. There don't seem to be any leaky or any of that, so, uh, I do know in, we, a couple of the dams in that heavy rain. Uh, one of them up by Walnut Grove had water running over the spillway, after, after the heavy rain. Um, did cause water running over there, not over the dam, but actually the water coming off of the spillway caused some issues because they weren't, it's not really expected that usually happen. So there were, but there weren't major issues, but it's just there, some did happen and a couple of. Uh, Lane talked about the, uh, canoe landing by Iberia and the one by landfill. Um, particularly the one by Iberia has a lot of damage. There's, I don't remember what he said, fairly deep holes in the, in the driveway. Um, Lane suggested that maybe it's time to call it quits on that one. And so that was talked about and I believe they voted to recommend abandoning that, that landing. So that, uh, is something we may be looking at. Lake Hanska, the camping is very busy there, they talked about the park being busy. Uh, Mountain Creek, uh, an issue is beavers there and they may be doing some, uh, trapping, um, on that edge, on that part of it. Uh, was nothing really, and lost dog, they brought up, and the tremble had the Frisbee Golf. So, that's kind of what they talked about it last night at the meeting, um, and we got wet there.
So we got wet?
Well, we were sitting in the shelter and it started to rain lightly and I was fine, we were sitting there and, and Chuck and I were sitting on the, kind of the east side of the shelter and we were looking across the lake and it's a little fuzzy and I, I, and it started to rain a little heavy and I says, the lake's disappearing. Well, then the wind came out and everybody's moved to the south in the center. And at that point, I, just before we moved, I told them, I says, I, when I drove up, I thought about driving the pickup up a lot closer to the shelter. Wished I would have because the time I drove, ran from the shelter to my pickup, I was drenched because I, I, my, my wife was coming over from the walls, so we decided to have supper at a place in town. And I actually went home and got a dry shirt on before I went out to eat last night. But it, little shower came up real fast and, so, uh, that's it for me.
It's that horizontal rain that'll get you every time.
There you go. How late did you stay to wait for it to quit raining?
About ten minutes.
Was, was there a drainage committee?
Oh.
I don't know if you guys did the full agenda or?
We did go through and I didn't bring that along, we did go through part of it. Uh, there'll be some issues coming up. We talked about a couple of, uh, of, uh, issues that we will need to address. Uh, nothing was serious, more of it was some things to kind of give direction to, uh, Lane and, and Andrew about where to go and, uh, this, uh, water. And I can't remember, I don't have the minutes right in front of me now, but it was, but, um, there, there's a couple of things going on, but there was nothing seriously. That was the day that, uh, we went a little long on the meeting and everybody had another place to go.
Okay. Okay, well, if there's nothing else, we'll go to Calendering, Days of Seven.
Open.
I have a salary meeting this afternoon.
Election, um, meeting following this meeting?
The election meeting and salary at two?
Salary's at two, I was just gonna.
I'm open.
Okay, the eighth.
Open.
Public Health meeting.
Uh, Joint LEC meeting, ten thirty, um, that's it.
I'm open?
I have fairs the rest of the week.
Three, the ninth?
Open.
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 I'm open.
Tenth?
Open.
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 I'm open, although I'm doing the Farm Family Presentation on Friday at, uh, two thirty and the auction.
Okay, the thirteenth?
Open.
Open.
Brown County Historic Saturday, seven o'clock.
I've got, oh, I'm open that day.
Open.
Fourteen?
Fourteen's open.
Open.
Mm, open.
I've got SWCD.
Laying and zoning.
Fifteen?
Open.
I have a JD eighteen, um, towers meeting and also a one watershed, one plant meeting.
Three o'clock, uh, teen court celebrating, uh, anniversary, there are four cordials.
I am open.
I'm open.
Sixteenth?
I have a ship meeting, ten AM, St. Peter.
Open. Open.
I have a USAC meeting that I'm unable to attend at one, one o'clock. So I don't know if anybody.
I can't be on that one that day.
I guess I'll be able, be able to do that. Okay, we'll move on to, are you open, Christian?
Yes.
And seventeenth?
Eight fifteen, there's that election campus meeting and then at nine AM, there's that CHB.
CHB?
Uh, eight fifteen canvas and, or eight thirty canvas, eight thirty we said, right?
I thought it's eight fifteen. I might have wrote it down wrong.
It started out eight fifteen and then eight thirty.
It's eight thirty for this one, it's eight fifteen for the one in November.
Yes.
Yes.
And nine o'clock, uh, Community Health.
I'm unavailable that day. Okay, Community Health.
And that canvas meeting's here.
Okay, the twentieth?
Budget workshop.
Budget.
Budget.
Same.
Budget.
And by the way, you got your books this morning. If there's any question prior to that Monday session, just let us know. It's same format, the narrative upfront and a lot of background with the departments.
Okay, and the twenty-first, that's just two weeks ago.
And, and on the twenty-first, Commissioner Borkardt, Commissioner Simson, at eight o'clock, we have that, uh, follow-up meeting with the county attorney on assistance salaries. That'll be in my office. And also there was a request for Highway Committee after the board meeting, um, on railroad crossing discussion. So that would be Commissioners Berg and Potter.
Why I get fast action if I ask about it?
What day?
Twenty-first.
The twenty-first after the board meeting.
I got it, eight AM.
And, and actually, the building committee, we're tentatively looking at the twenty-eighth, but we'll review that at the next meeting. Relative to the license rail, so that would be Commissioners Berg and Simson.
Did you say USAC was on the sixteenth or the seventeenth?
Sixteenth.
The sixteenth I can do, seventeenth I can't.
Yeah, I think it's at one, oh. I'll email you.
Okay.
For sure.
And, oh, Mr. Director, in reference to that AMC thing, I've got a Guburva meeting that Friday.
Okay.
Is that at the, uh, Lehtels?
Yeah.
Lehtels.
Okay. Okay, so I think, is that it for Calendering? If there's nothing else, we'll return to meeting. Thanks, everybody.